Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is very nice to see you out there. This is... So, we'll move on. I'll call the meeting to order. And once again, thank you very much for being here. I would like to let you know that we do have our iPads here, which our agenda for this evening is on our iPads. So unless we're typing away or talking to our iPad, we're not communicating with the outside world, we're just looking at the agenda. So please be aware that you'll see, and you'll see me go into panic mode when the agenda goes off the screen and I bring it back up, but that's what I'm doing. So be aware of that, please. And do we have a closed session report, Mr. City Attorney?
We have nothing to report at this time.
Let me repeat that, there's nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Tony, would you lead us in the pledge?
Let me stand up. Please, again, we are ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littler, here. Councilmember Luvenos, here. Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanagh is absent. Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
We welcome you to the Simi Valley City Council meeting. We're excited that the state fully reopened and businesses are returning to usual operations. Simi Valley businesses need your support as they continue to recover from the pandemic, so please support them as much as possible. We remind the public that COVID-19 has not gone away, and we encourage all persons to get vaccinated to protect themselves, their loved ones, and others in the community. This city council meeting is a hybrid, meaning that the public is in attendance tonight in the city council chambers and can provide public statements in person. In addition, the public is able to provide public statement virtually through Zoom. For members of the public that wished to provide public statements via Zoom, the public was required to register no later than 3:30 PM today. Written comment are also accepted by email. Those emails have already been provided to the city council, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening.
The city and the city council thank you for your patience during this COVID time, and certainly we welcome you back. The city continues to provide opportunities for the public to participate in the business of the city and for their voices to be heard. With that said, we can move on with tonight's meeting. So we'll start with the agenda review. Any items anybody wants to bring up?
Mr. Mayor, we do recommend pulling Agenda Item 6. It was a final map for project on Cochrane Street. The map is not completed yet, and we put it on the agenda anticipating that it would, but it was not, so we would recommend pulling our continuing Agenda Item Consent 6 to a date uncertain.
Consent 6, okay.
Consent 6, yes.
Okay. Great.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived. Second?
Okay, motion second. Call for the vote.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to lock the votes. Sorry. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Kavanagh, absent. Thank you.
Okay, declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Do we have anyone? Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening under certificates on honorary resolutions or proclamations. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. We have no speaker cards or Zoom speakers for this item. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A1, Adoption of a Resolution Ratifying the Jurisdictional Joint Reappointment of the Resident Commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners, and Eric Chen is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The Area Housing Authority of the County Ventura requests your endorsement of a resident commissioner to represent the area housing authority's public housing residents. The Area Housing Authority serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction appoints two commissioners, and one resident commissioner is appointed at large. Following an open nomination period, review of applications from interested candidates among the eligible public housing residents, and subsequent interviews, Ms. Angela Bradley, a public housing resident from Ojai, was selected by the Area Housing Authority for a two-year reappointment. Ms. Bradley is not in attendance tonight, however, she is enthusiastic about representing the tenant body on the board. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution ratifying the jurisdictional joint reappointment of Ms. Angela Bradley for a two-year term as the resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County Ventura Board of Commissioners commencing June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2023. This concludes the presentation. Staffs available for questions.
Mr. Mayor, may I read the resolution?
Yes.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley ratifying the jurisdictional joint reappointment of Angela Bradley as resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. That is Resolution Number 2021-27.
Okay, any comments or questions, staff?
I have a question, Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I'm just curious, was the call for, was there no one else that was available for the reappointment, or was there no one else who applied, or she was just the best candidate? I'm just curious.
Well, there was interview interviewing process, and I believe that six members were nominated, and I believe four was interviewed. And they ultimately select, the area housing authority ultimately selected Ms. Bradley.
Okay, thank you. I just wonder what the process was. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion?
I so move that we adopt Resolution Number 2021-27 ratifying the jurisdictional joint reappointment of Ms. Angela Bradley for the two-year term concluding May 31st, 2023, as the resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners.
Second. The motion at second? Did you hear the second was Councilmember Judge?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening under special presentation or informational reports. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is the time for testimony on public hearings under consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. That the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit of this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted, followed by speakers via Zoom who registered by 3:30 PM today to speak during this public testimony, Item 4, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments aren't related to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time with which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 109, 4.6. A public hearing to consider a request from Land Developer and Associates Corp. for a modification to a conditional use permit, CUP-S-744-MOD #1, to construct a 98-room hotel at 2585 Cochrane Street and increase the building from three stories to four stories; a zone text amendment, Z-S-751, to reduce parking space requirements for hotels and motels; adoption of a negative declaration; adoption of a resolution; and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2021-28, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving a modification to a conditional use permit, CUP-S-744-MOD #1, and adopting the project's negative declaration to construct a 98-room, four-story hotel on a 1.64-acre parcel located at 2585 Cochrane Street. And the reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1324, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving Simi Valley Municipal Code Amendment, Z-S-751, to revise portions of Title IX to reduce the parking space requirements for hotels and motels, and adopt the negative declaration. And Naren Gunasakara and Sean Murphy are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. Our associate planner, Naren Gunasakara, will do the presentation tonight. Naren?
Good evening. The applicant, Land Developer and Associates Corporation, requests approval of a modification to a conditional use permit to construct a four-story, 98-room hotel on a 1.64-acre vacant site located at 2585 Cochrane Street. The request also includes a development code update to reduce the parking requirements for hotels and motels citywide. The project includes a negative declaration. The project site is shown north, is shown here, north of Cochrane, approximately 600 feet west of Sycamore Drive. Access is via an easement across the junkyard site. The 118 freeway is to the north, residences to the west, and commercial buildings to the east where Big Lots and the DIY Home Center are located. The original project was approved by the Planning Commission in December 2014 for a three-story, 106-room hotel. In August 2019, the applicant submitted a request to modify the project to add a story and reduce the rooms, as well as a zone text amendment to reduce parking for hotels and motels citywide. The modification to the CUP and the zone text amendment were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on May 19, 2021. This is the site plan for the proposed project. The 98-room hotel will include 79 surface parking spaces and a spa to the south. There will be a 10-foot landscape buffer along the west side of the property, and the existing six-foot-high boundary wall will be increased to eight feet. The blue arrow indicates where the easement to Cochrane Street is located, while the red arrow indicates where the fire department required off-site easement to the east will be located. The hotel will have a 400-square-foot meeting room, a business center, a breakfast area, and a fitness room, all on the first floor, which will only be available to hotel guests. The guest room sizes range from 295 square feet to 711 square feet suites. Note that the quality of the PDF elevations results in different colorations for the west elevation, the east elevation is the representative version. The hotel continues to be a Santa Barbara Mission-style structure with varying roofline heights. The main building will be constructed of ivory stucco walls with forward trim and accents in dark brown, along with a red clay tile roof with composite wood rafters. Portions of the second story and floors above are furred out and will provide depth and shadows, breaking up the building's mass, and will incorporate forward trim and accents to provide variety in color. This photo simulation shows the hotel from the 118 freeway and the Sycamore exit ramp. In order to accommodate the project, the applicant has requested a development code amendment to reduce citywide parking requirements for hotels and motels. For the May 19, 2021 hearing, the applicant provided a more comprehensive parking study, as was requested by the commission, that conducted seven-day parking counts for six hotels in and around Simi Valley and neighboring cities. The counts included weekends and were done from 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM and counted the ratio of spaces to rooms booked. This slide shows the hotels that were surveyed, and the number of rooms booked, and the cars present at the dates and times listed. These numbers were then used to calculate the peak demand for parking, shown in the right column. The highest peak parking demands were 79% for the Grand Vista and Courtyard Marriott Hotels. The average peak demand was 77%. The peak parking demand shown captures the parking required for both hotel guests and employee parking. The Institute of Transport Engineers, ITE, Parking Generation Manual, indicates that a hotel of 99 rooms or less would require .83 parking spaces per hotel room. However, the applicant's site-specific study shows that a peak parking demand of .79 parking spaces per room and a .77 average for the more comparable hotels. Maximum hotel occupancy between January 2018 and February 2020 in Simi Valley was 86.7%. The increase in ride-sharing and reduction in car rentals and the future use of autonomous vehicles makes .8 parking spaces per hotel room reasonable. Therefore, the proposed code amendment of .8 parking spaces per room is supported by the analyzed site-specific data. Staff proposes to separate the parking requirements out for hotels with more than 100 rooms and those with 100 rooms or less. For hotels with more than 100 rooms, the current standards will remain unchanged. For hotels with 100 rooms or less, the requirement will be .8 spaces per guest room for guest and employee parking. Additionally, staff recommends that for hotels with 100 or fewer rooms, a site-specific parking study be required if the hotel wishes to provide restaurants or conference facilities open to the public. The revisions to the zoning code that were approved by the commission are shown here with the changes underlined and in bold. This table shows the hotels in Simi Valley, the number of rooms for each hotel, and if this new code amendment would potentially affect these hotels. As you can see, both the Holiday Inn Express and Motel 6 could potentially be expanded based on the recommended parking ratio of .8 per room, .8 parking spaces per room. The courtyard by Marriott was approved in 2019 for the addition of 16 rooms and other modifications. The other modifications have been complete, but the rooms have not been added yet. The rest of the hotels will not be affected by this code amendment. Staff recommends that the city council approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the CUP modification and introduce the ordinance approving Z-S-751 related to reducing the parking requirements citywide for hotels and motels that have 100 rooms or less. This concludes my presentation, and staff are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we ask questions of staff, are there any expertise communications to report? None?
I did meet, I'm sorry.
I did meet with the developer and the owner this past Friday.
Okay.
To discuss the...
Okay, and I was scheduled to and was unable to. So, okay. All right, with that, we'll move forward with questions of staff and responses. Questions to staff?
May I, Mayor?
Oh, sorry, I didn't look at my...
Sorry.
We'll go ahead with Councilmember Luvenos first.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, since the decrease in number of parking spaces is due to ride-sharing, and is there any plan for the developer to include ride-share spaces? Or can we include that in the ordinance, or is that just a suggestion, or is that something that the developer would be amenable to?
I believe the developer's here tonight. We could refer that question to him.
Okay. When we get to the developer, can I ask that question, Mayor? Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have a question. So the developer asked for a zone text amendment as opposed to a CUP for parking. Could they, would that have been an option for the developer just for this project, to have a conditional use? Would that have been an option?
There is no option for a conditional use permit to change code standards in this case, so the zone text amendment is the most efficient, the zone text amendment is the most efficient way to achieve the parking reduction, because the CUP does not reduce parking.
Gotcha.
That would have been a variance, which we could not make the findings for.
Okay. So this was really the only way that... I guess what I'm trying to understand is, was there, would there have been a way for that just to apply to this project only versus applying throughout the city?
The only other option is variance, but a variance requires specific findings for something unusual or difficult about the property, and we, staff did not felt that those findings could be made to reduce parking in that method.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you, let's see, do you have an opinion, I guess from a planning standpoint, of the reduction is it'll apply to the rest of the city, correct, for hotels?
Yes, for 100 rooms or less.
100 rooms or less specific. And then looking at, I tried getting the information, and I think your chart showed it, that the, our hotels are rarely, if ever, at 100% capacity. Is that correct, as far as you know?
That's correct, and I believe one of the surveys indicated a maximum of 86% pre-COVID for a, in Simi Valley, or a timeframe. And, yeah, sometimes they're not always 100% occupied.
Okay, which means we may have excess parking currently.
There very well could be excess parking. The one space per unit was kind of a nice round level created probably decades ago, and it was always set in most codes across the state. And now we've done some specific counting and studies to see if we can get that down to help achieve the applicant's proposal.
Okay. Okay, just, yeah, for the record, I think the figures I came up with, or received, did not go by daily, but by monthly. It didn't give any specific days, like you can say, hey, it is Christmas, a busier one day a year full. It said by months, it's never over 84 point something percent.
Right, and the, sometimes parking's based on making it park on the most busiest day of the year, so, you know, that may be one week out of the year where it's 100% occupied.
Okay.
We do enjoy the luxury that most of our, well, I think all of our hotels share larger parking lots. So on those few days out of the year when there may in fact be 100% occupied, it probably won't overly impact the entire area.
Okay, do we have any more questions?
May I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
If I can ask one more question, Mayor? Is there public transportation adjacent to this hotel?
Yes, there is a bus stop maybe about .8 miles away.
Okay, so people can use public transportation if they choose. Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, the applicant? I don't know who that is. Well...
Good evening. Yeah, Daniel Singh with Land Developer and Associates. We're the asset manager for the property and principals of the property, so, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. We appreciate the opportunity to present our proposed development of a Marriott Fairfield Inn. Inn Hotel Development. We initially acquired the property around 2010, I believe, and filed an application, went through the process for about four years, and ultimately, I think, as stated, the previous proposal was approved in 2014. The major difference between this proposal and that proposal was there was underground parking that was required at the time, and when we went to go to final CDs, construction drawings and stuff, and hire, look into hiring a general contractor to build it, we realized the cost that we initially anticipated was about a couple of million dollars to build the parking structure. It turned out to be more like eight to 10 million dollars. And during that period of time, the architect we retained also passed away, so we ended up having to file a new application. So specifically, I mean, to try and address the parking, we are hospitality people. We've owned up to 10 hotels at one time, mostly in this kind of segment, which is kind of a limited service. There's no restaurant, there's no bar. The Fairfield Inn is equivalent to something like a Hampton Inn or a Holiday Inn Express. So, most of the hotels that we have park at about .7 parking spaces per guest. So even when you're 100% occupancy, which is rare, but in the market study that we obtained, it showed there's a potential for being 100% occupied somewhere between 10 to 15 days throughout the year, you still would be parked at .7. So, most of the time, you would, you'd have excess parking in the parking lot. We've done several studies. I think we started off with one study. Ultimately, we went up to, I think, five studies in response to going back and forth with staff, getting their, following their guidance, and did a bunch of parking counts. So the, so we, obviously, we went through two planning commission hearings. We've garnered a lot of community support. At the last planning, at the first planning commission hearing, I think we had about 10 people speak in favor. The last planning commission, there were six people spoke in favor of our project. We also previously submitted a petition, which was signed by the neighbors to the west of us, the resident tract, who spoke in favor of our project. I think also we have the architect who's participating by Zoom call and the traffic engineer, if you have any questions. I think that the architect just wanted to go through the actual design of the hotel. So unless you have any further questions for me, I think we're going to have the architect present, and then we may have the traffic engineer, and then we also have CFO who'd like to speak a little bit about the hotel.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Louvenos, she have questions?
Yes, I'm not sure to ask you or who to ask, but I wanted to know if you would be willing to designate two of the parking spaces for ride-share.
Sure, I mean, generally on the ride-share, we have the port-a-casher, so you have several cars which can park under the port-a-casher temporarily, but generally, that's how we deal with the ride-share Uber, Lyft, and those kind of people. They just pull in under the port-a-casher, wait for their guests to come, or those kind of things. So there's, is a pretty sizable port-a-casher which allows for, I think, three, four cars which can park over there.
Okay, wonderful. And then, is there any possibility of having an electrical vehicle charging station anywhere on the facility?
I believe we do. I'll defer to the architect to go through the site plan and address that question.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Elaine, you have a question?
No, that's from...
Okay.
I'm not sure who's working Zoom, but we can go ahead and have the architect go ahead.
Okay, I've selected a screen to share here. Let me know if you see it.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, all right, so this is the cover sheet with all the information. Let me make this bigger. You have this in your packet, by the way.
Yes.
The first initial packet. So, I'm not the landscape architect, so I won't delve into the details here, but this is the landscape proposal. A lot of trees that are common to the area and plants that are low water use and then all that good stuff. The, to get into more what I do know about, let's get to the pictures here. Okay, so as was mentioned earlier, apologies for the quality of some of these renders. The sunlight angle made the colors shift, but as you can see, it's a mission style with the tile roofs and two-tone walls. We have, this is again at the direction of the previous planning, the first round, which required us to do this style. So, we're using rafter tails and stucco and the couple of typical details that may be familiar to people, some wrought iron accents and so forth, even to the trash and recycling enclosure details. And then, let's go on to... We're trying to incorporate the mechanical units as, to make them vanish as much as possible. They're all below the windows. This is the views from various angles and showing that we don't overlook the neighbors too much. That's about it. It's not a standard Fairfield design. It was heavily modified to be mission, to be a mission style so that we could answer the requirements of the first planning commission. That's about all I've got.
I mean, the only thing I would add to that, there is a Fairfield Inn, a new one, which was opened, I think, in Molbach, as you come from the 23 meeting, the 118. So that is more of a prototypical type. This is obviously been enhanced from that hotel. So, we also have to deal with Marriott and their design team to try and get those concessions, and we have reviewed this enhancements with them, and they're on board with those.
Okay, thank you.
Can you have your architect address the vehicle charging station?
Jerome, you want to address that?
And if we could, at the same time, maybe if it's convenient to do the breezeway where you're talking about the ride-share parking area, so we can see that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I stopped sharing too soon. The electrical vehicle parking is mandated by code, and we will have a certain percentage of the spaces available for that. That will show up during plan check. Let's see if I can zoom in on the, yeah, here we go. All right, so here's the port-a-casher. You can see it's quite sizable, plenty of room to park two or three cars on either side of it for drop-off and pickup.
Okay, good, thank you. Question I have, maybe you could address it at this time, is the area between the homes to the west and your property, the landscaping there, could you give a little more detail on that and the screening that's being done?
Yeah, sure. I mean, the staff, essentially, we work with staff, they asked us to enhance the landscaping, so we're proposing trees, which are usually you have smaller, I think it's a couple-of-gallon, five-gallon trees or something like that, but based upon the concern the staff had, even though we got a lot of support from the community, we still are proposing larger trees, essentially doing a forest along the property line. And then we also had a consultant go out to meet with each one of the neighboring properties. I think there's, I believe there's five houses which are neighborous, and they spoke to them regarding this, and also about raising the wall height from six feet to eight feet. And my understanding is pretty much everybody was agreeable to doing that. I think Mr. Phil Terry is here, and he can elaborate on, if you need, on his discussions with those neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Maybe if, it'd be a good time to have him come up and talk about that.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So, I did meet with, there's six houses there. One of them's kind of halfway, met with all of them there, and they were all amenable to having a new wall built for them in their backyards. So, they were actually very happy about something being put there, because there's a lot of homeless back there they have, they've had some trouble with. So, we've been speaking to them for many years back there.
Okay, and they're aware of the trees and the size?
Sure.
And their input also?
Yeah, I showed them the whole design when I went and visited with each one of them.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to...
You got it.
About it, is anybody else, yeah?
Just a couple of questions. Help me understand, I understand because of the additional fourth story, you were, it's required to have a secondary easement through the real, the commercial property behind. Is there any question about acquiring that easement? Is that...
Go ahead. Yeah, I've spoken to the Big Luck people, the CFO, a couple of times, and essentially there, that alleyway is encumbered by existing easements, utility easements and stuff like that, and they recognize that, recognize that by providing an easement to us, that it really doesn't impact them in any way, because they can't do anything with the property. I spoke to the property owner, and they seemed amenable to doing those things, too.
Okay, very good. And just one other final question. I know this whole discussion of parking is based on not having restaurant facility, basically the public coming in in addition to people that are staying there. I know that there is, I believe in the plans, a 400-square-foot meeting room that I'm told is just for private use. Is there a way that we know that that's kept? I mean, could that become public? I mean, is that...
I mean, generally, at the hotels we have, we don't really have public people coming in. It's more for people like we have, they has tournaments and stuff like that, that you end up using for like a pizza party and those kind of things, right? So, it's, it's...
You don't have big weddings taking place in that little room?
400, I think you divide by 75 is the occupancy load, right? So you could maybe get, I don't know how many people that is, 30, 40 people or something like that.
Not that it changes my concerns about parking, I just want to understand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, you know, it's not viable really to have a wedding in that small of a space, right?
Okay. Thank you, just trying to understand, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate. Oh, I'm sorry, you have one more question?
On the fourth story facing the freeway, where's your signage going to be? How is the signage going to be placed?
The signage is, there's a bell tower which is at the same height location as the previous approval, so that's, yeah, so the, that would, you could see the bell tower just barely through the tree. There's a, a lot of trees, of course, between us and the freeway.
I thought the bell tower was removed. Is the, but the bell tower is still there?
The bell tower was reduced in height.
Gotcha.
So it's at the same height or maybe less than it was previously approved. When we first filed the application, revised application, amended application, the bell tower was shown as a higher location, and then after communications with staff and during the planning commission hearing process, they requested we reduce it down to the previous height or lower, and I believe that's what happened.
So, do you plan to have any of the signage visible from the freeway?
We're hoping that people can see the bell tower from the freeway. Certainly, you look in between the two trees, it is, it depends how fast you're going, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll...
I think we got one CFO who's going to...
Oh, okay.
Good evening, council members. Oh.
Could I ask the Madam Secretary to hand this to us, please?
Do you have enough?
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. So what you're looking at in front of you is essentially the revenues that this project will generate to the city, specifically to the city general fund. In way of revenues, you'll get revenues from the TOT, property taxes, business license taxes, and sales tax. Vast majority of the revenue that's going to come in will be from the TOT. As you can see from the first page of the schedule, over a 10-year period, we estimate 4.1 million dollars in revenues to the city's general fund, with lesser amounts coming from both property taxes, business license, and sales taxes. Again, this is our projections over a 10-year period. Page two of the presentation is just some more details. It's details that kind of roll into page one. And the very last page is from a study that was done by economists a couple of years ago regarding the jobs that would be created from this project. They estimated during the construction period, as well as when the hotel operates, as well as the guest expenditures, there'd be about 418 jobs that will be created directly from this project. Vast majority will be created during the construction period and the operation of the hotel itself, rest from guest expenditures. That is very brief, and that's my presentation. If you have any questions, please, have a good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor, I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is there a walkable path? Because there's a lot of eateries, there's like Millie's, and you know, you mentioned the retail food guest expenditure. So, is there a safe way for people to walk from the hotel to adjacent areas?
Well, I mean...
Like, is there going to be a pedestrian walkway?
There is, we back up to the Big Lots and that shopping center, and so there, obviously, there's that alleyway around the back, which our property connects to, so there is a potential for them to be able to get by there. I think we did include some walkability to the, to the, to the project, right?
Well, you are going through an existing shopping center, and there is a pathway through the shopping center down to the public street and back across over to subway, the DIY buildings, et cetera. So you are partial sidewalk access and partial pathways are kind of off the, off the driveway going through the shopping center.
Okay, that's why, I just want to make sure they're not having to walk through the driveways that they, there's other pedestrian pathways they can take.
They're not new pathways, there's existing...
Existing ones already?
Stairways, when those walkways are open during business hours.
Okay, that's it, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment based on what you just gave us. I realize that those attendants aren't seeing the same paperwork, but the projections you just gave us are based on occupancy rates of between 65 to 75%, which is, which is reasonable, and I just want to commend you for not throwing it at 100% to make it look really good. I did, that's all I wanted to point out, that that's what this is showing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to be heard on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have three speaker cards, and we have one speaker via Zoom.
Okay, we'll start those present first.
Evelyn Garfield?
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Just for the record, well, you know, we're the owners of the junkyard, and Tony and I are really excited about the hotel coming in. We think it would be really great for the city and for us, but we do have a big concern about the parking. I'm not really sure if the, was it 78 parking spots? Were those, did that include the breezeway or the ride-share parking and the electric parking? Or are those... Or are those in addition to? So that was a question.
Okay, we'll go ahead and finish what you have said and then we'll ask the applicant to come back up and answer.
And then, because we have six businesses represented in the building where the junkyard is and all their employee parking, for the most part, is up in our parking lot area that's, is in question. Our restaurant seating, two hundred and thirty people roughly, plus the school next door with their school, student parking and employee parking. And then I'm thinking with the hotel employees parking, I don't know how many spaces that would take up if there was just some planning for where any overflow parking from the hotel would go. Because as it is right now, we've got a hundred and thirty spots to accommodate all those people that we just talked about and we fill up regularly. So if there was a plan for those days that the hotel is full or how many employees do they have, how much employee parking they're anticipating, that would always be there. You know, I don't know the answer to those questions. And I think that's it, those are my concerns.
All right, thank you. And we'll ask the applicant to respond.
Yeah, appreciate your comments. First of all, we anticipate no impact from our project on the neighboring property. As the studies state, we, we're, will be overparked. We also are in discussions with the Big Lots people about potentially overparking. We've also contacted Caltrans to see if there's a way to open up some area next to us. They certainly have been amenable to allowing us to have overparking at the lot, which is at Sycamore and the 118. So we're exploring all those options in the, in the event there is, but we really don't anticipate, based upon the hotels that we operate, based upon the technical studies, traffic studies on additional hotels. The two Fairfieldians, Marriott Fairfieldians were studied, which are exactly the same as the project that we're proposing. And the findings are very consistent with the parking that we're requesting reduction.
Okay. One of the questions that she had was the count for your facility. Does that include the, the parking that's in the breezeway for ride share and stuff? Do you count that as your total?
Not, not in, the breezeway parking under the porticoche would be in addition to, that would be very temporary parking, but that would be in addition to the seventy-eight spots.
Okay, so the seventy-eight will be marked parking out in the parking lot?
Yes, and we have other hotels that we've dealt with in other kind of areas. So what we normally do is we, we, we mark our spots to show that they are for Fairfieldian and the guests are instructed when they check in that they to park only in those spots which have been stamped Marriott Fairfieldian and stuff like that. So they're very clear about where, where and how they can park.
Okay, great. Any other questions of the applicant while he's up? Okay.
Do we have any other comments?
Yes. Heidi, Heidi Peterson?
Hi, good evening to all of you, City Council members and the mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I've spoken before via Zoom, so this is a, a nice change in the, in the environment to be able to be in person with you all. I'll, I'll keep it very short and sweet. Basically, I just wanted to say I am in favor of this project very much so. I mean, I'm a mother of two. We have a lot of sports and activities and, and things and we want families, members to come visit us and there just really isn't, I'm, I'm right by the Cochran, you know, the street right there off of Sequoia. So, I mean, this would just be so close, it would be, I mean, all of my neighbors, it'd be a very favorable thing for us to have a hotel and a place for our family and friends to, to stay. And I feel I've driven by there many a times. I mean, as we all know, there's tons of commercial property right there and stores and things we all visit quite often, I'm sure. And I, I just feel that this is sort of a perfect spot for it. I appreciate what others are saying, of course, but I, I feel like it's a great fit, we need it. And I just drove by there today on my way to meeting with you all and I just thought, hmm, that it's just this empty parking, there's all these mattresses and things around the perimeter of the property. And I thought, I just don't see that that would be the, the vibe or the feeling once we have a beautiful hotel or, you know, something that's brand new, bringing just the whole change to, to that area. It's just been kind of downtrodden. I mean, no offense, Junkyard's a great place, but I think you guys would all appreciate having something beautiful there to look at rather than at nighttime when people put their mattresses and the other sketchy things that are going on around there. So I just, I want to acknowledge that. I really hope you guys consider this project and let's make it happen, let's bring something great like this to the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sophia Santoro?
Anyway, thank you for having me here. I personally believe that this project is a waste of resources. As people have been saying and implying earlier, we have a bit of a homeless problem here in Simi Valley. And wouldn't it be better to have some affordable housing in place of this hotel? Because I, I think we have enough hotels and motels here in Simi anyway. Like, we should, we should use our time and resources that we have to help those who need it the most. And also a bit of a side note, if you guys do build this property, I think it'd be best if you not put magnolias there because they're, they're really pretty, but they also use up a lot of water and we're in a really nasty drought right now. So, yeah, thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bruce Boyer?
Good evening all, I'm Bruce Boyer. I don't live in Simi Valley, I'm candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County. I live right next to you in Chatsworth Lake Manor. So as I'm listening to this presentation, here's a couple of thoughts. Sir, that is one beautiful building. Outstanding. I think that's an absolute upgrade. I think that'll be a great benefit for the junkyard. I did come two other thoughts. I would be concerned that, oh, I don't know, not you all, but other politicians might want to use that beautiful hotel to put in people that don't choose to work and provide their own housing. Those would be called people that choose to live on the streets. That would really be a bad thing. And that would be a concern, I think, people living there to go, well, wait a minute. Five years from now, is it going to be housing for criminals that live on the street? That would be a concern. If I lived in Simi Valley, I'd be pushing on this city council to put out a resolution, ordinance that says, you're not going to allow criminals to be housed at the public expanse. Now, the young lady that spoke before me, if she'd like to build housing for anybody she'd like, I'm all in favor of her putting up, I don't know, thirty million dollars. She can put up a building, she can give it away for free, she can let everyone live there for free, if she's willing to put up the money. Our resources do not mean that this cowboy pays for other people's lunch, unless I invite you. So that would be my one concern as to the hotel, that ten years from now, it isn't going to be housing homeless or whoever else the politicians want to shove in. Maybe you all could figure that out as a citywide ordinance, maybe there'd be some support from the people in Simi Valley for that. Just maybe. Here's another thought that came to me. Nobody's mentioned as to the revenues. By my calculations, that hotel ought to generate about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue for the city on the hotel room tax. Now, that's just my rough calculation sitting in the seat, maybe it's two, maybe it's three hundred thousand. Well, if I'm running a city and I got a budget and I got a proposal to bring in that kind of money for the next thirty years, I'm going to go, that's a good idea. And my last thought with that is I said, you know, when I dated the gal in Simi Valley and her dad couldn't come visit her because he drove a motor home and you wouldn't let him park in the city streets, so he couldn't come visit his daughter, I thought, you know, that hotel room tax that the city generates might be a reason why you don't want to let people park their motor homes, their travel trailers on their public streets. Just kind of doing the math, you know, following the money. Sure, have hotel room tax, absolutely. But to tell people that their registered vehicles cannot park on a public street? Well, that's why we have a lawsuit. And with all the hotel room taxes, you'll have money to pay for the damages. But we'll talk about that in public comment. But overall, sir, I think that's an absolutely beautiful building, no disrespect to you, clearing up an area that's a problem. I like it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker card is Tony Gage or Guy, G-A-I-J?
Thank you for your time. I'm one of the residents that lives behind the west wall of the Alden Street. And I, I just have a few concerns as far as construction times, noise abatement, sound abatement. What are the plans, basically more towards the developer? You know, I live right behind the junkyard and it's a mixed bag. I like living back there because they have live bands I can listen to, but at the same time, there's a lot of noise at night and during the daytime too. So I just want to make sure that this new construction isn't going to, you know, increase the amount of dust during construction and noise during construction. And also, it's going to be a nice, safe area for, for my family, you know, to, you know, be around. So I just kind of want to know what the plans are. The, the west wall, I want to know if it's going to be the whole entire wall or if it's just going to be, because that's a pretty long driveway getting into the junkyard, if you guys are familiar with it. You have to drive pretty, pretty far to get to where that plot of land is at. So is it just going to be of the wall where the hotel is at or is it going to be for the whole entire stretch of that wall? Eight feet sounds good. There are a few large pine trees there. I'm not sure if those are planning on staying there also or if those are going to be in addition to the rest of the forest that we're talking about building. So that's, that, those are really all of my concerns, those are all my questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker via Zoom.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that speaker did not register or they registered, but they're not here. So we have no speakers via Zoom.
I believe that one speaker is not online right now.
We have no speakers on Zoom.
We don't have them. We do have a person with their hand raised as an attendee.
It's not for this item, Sean.
Okay. Right, no additional comments then?
Correct.
None? Okay, all right. We'll go back to the applicant if he'd like to respond to the comments. You're getting your exercise tonight, getting up and, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate everybody's comments. Regarding the land use, I mean, there's a number of different types of uses for the projects. I'm, I don't believe one of the uses is for homeless or apartments and things like that. We intend to use it as a hotel, that's why we bought the property, we think that's the best use for that particular property. With respect to construction, we'll abide by all the city requirements. There's, there's pretty extensive requirements on when you can start construction, when you can conclude construction and mitigation measures for things like dust and those kind of things during a grading operation and stuff like that. So we fully intend to comply with all the, the rules and regulations in place by the city. And with respect to the wall, the wall we have would be eight feet, which fronts onto the property lines with, between us and the neighbors. It doesn't extend all the way out to Cochran.
Excuse me, I, it will or it will not all?
It will, but I don't believe so. I mean, I'm not sure if the architect is on there, but I don't think it goes all the way out because we don't impact, we're not proposing any building along the driveway which comes into it. It only, it's only when it comes onto our property, that's an easement that we, that we're a beneficiary of. So we don't propose to do anything along that easement that's not on our property.
Okay, do you, are you aware, and maybe there's a, a photo of the wall area and the pine trees the gentleman was talking about? Can we address those?
I think Naren may have a slide here.
Correct. That's our property and then the wall, which is contiguous to it. The wall does continue on beyond us, onto the neighboring property where the Junkyard Cafe parking and building is.
I think that's where the pine trees are, down that area.
So we, we do not propose any adjustments to that area.
Okay, the palm trees, are they also beyond the property line?
I believe so. They're behind? Okay. They are, they are beyond.
Other property?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question because one of the speakers asked about magnolia trees. I don't see them in here, but I just want to make sure, there's no magnolia trees on there? Because I didn't see them in here.
I don't think there's any existing ones. I think they may, in the landscaping plan, whatever was proposed is, is stated on the landscaping plan.
Okay, because I, I don't see any in there, so I just want to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, staff?
Can I have some more to that?
Sure, come on.
So even though the, the entire wall isn't going to be built up to eight feet, I feel that the only access and egress to this property is going to be along that wall. That's the only way traffic, so they're proposing about a hundred more, hundred more rooms and about, what, seventy or so, eighty more cars? That's going to be a lot more traffic come along that wall. And currently, the way that wall is right now, it's a little less than, I think, about six feet. So that is going to cause a lot more noise and pollution from all the vehicles traveling back and forth between that narrow little strip that is right up against all the houses. So I don't know if you can reconsider, you know, building the wall all the way down because that is going to affect a lot of the residents against that Alden Street. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Mashburn, for the, for the record, we'd like to unmute Stacy, who was scheduled for the next item, we're just going to ask her if she had any comments on this one because her hand is raised. Oh, okay, okay, that's fine. Just to confirm.
Hi Stacy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, you are not, your speaker is very low.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, everybody to the lobby. Oh, wait, that wouldn't be social distancing, so forget that one.
Stacy, we have some audio. Stacy, we have some audio issues, but actually speak now. I think they've switched it on inside.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, and the members of the city council. My name is Stacy Vander Schaaf and I am a Simi Valley resident. While the proposed hotel project could help drive foot traffic into the restaurants and other nearby businesses, I think there are some parking and traffic problems that must be addressed. The existing parking lot next to the site is used by customers, students, and employees of several businesses and the opportunities for learning charter school. I hope that the contract with the hotel will include a language to prohibit hotel guests and staff from using the parking spaces for the businesses, especially if the hotel has granted the requested reduction in parking space requirements. The current proposal only seeks about 80 spaces for 98 rooms, and I'm doubtful that all of those spaces will accommodate hotel guests, people attending events at the hotel, plus all of the employees. A plan for overflow parking should be a requirement. The only existing driveway for access in and out of the proposed hotel site is quite small and will create congestion issues during peak traffic hours, including drop off and pickup times for the school. Are there other possible routes for construction vehicles to enter and exit the site so as to mitigate these traffic hazards? And would it be possible to require any construction vehicles to use those routes instead of the existing driveway? An additional driveway could be repurposed upon completion of the hotel to serve as another access point for hotel guests, which would help alleviate future traffic concerns. Also relating to the construction phase, will the developers be responsible for covering costs for maintenance, cleaning, and repairs to the parking lot? In addition, is the construction area required to be fenced in during construction to protect customer, student, and employee vehicles that currently use that parking lot? What kinds of dust and debris mitigation measures will be taken during construction? Those are all my questions and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond to those questions?
So, yeah, I'll try to, everyone can hear me now. Try to respond to some of those and some of the earlier questions. Construction hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. So those are the universal construction hours in the city. The proposed eight-foot wall is just within the property boundary controlled by the applicant. And we did mention there's no pine trees on that site. As part of a conditional use permit, you could apply condition to the hotel to direct signage to not park on the adjacent property. That could be a condition of approval. Construction vehicles, while they could have access to the easement, they are having to construct a secondary access through the back alley behind DIY center big lots. That's potentially a driveway option for construction vehicles. The easement maintenance is subject to the rules and regulations of the easement agreement. We wouldn't have a say in maintaining that off-site easement. That's subject to the existing easement rules that are in place. And did I miss any?
I can say dust mitigation, the contractor is required to have a water truck on site and we regularly would respond to any dust mitigation that may happen. I can say at any time you're turning dirt, you're going to have dust. So there will be a certain amount of ambient dust in the air, but primarily they'll be required to keep the dust, the dust down from the site. The site will be fenced and we do require the site to be fenced as well as the screening, the green screen on the fence to keep looky-loo's out as well.
Yes.
Hold on one, one second, okay. Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to respond to any of that? I think the staff did a good job. Okay. All right, I see someone else wants to speak. You'll need to fill out a blue card. You can fill it out after you speak.
John Rafferty, Simi Residence, great project. I think I would suggest that when you have the opportunity for approval, that this project should have a wall that continues all the way to the street because the hotel is definitely going to use that whole area to impact those alleys there outside. This is the opportunity to get the building to contribute to the whole area.
Go ahead.
I just want to ask our planning department, obviously, the builder doesn't own the property that is, goes all the way to the street. That is controlled by someone else. Do, can, I mean, obviously, we could ask them to talk to them. I mean, is it typical to condition something on someone else's private property?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you cannot condition it in such a way. It's, it's not their property.
Say that again?
You won't be able to condition it, that wall, to extend on somebody else's property.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Public speaking, we're going to shut off. No other comments? Okay, we'll shut that off. Okay, comments from council members? We'll start with council member Louvenus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the developer for choosing Simi Valley. This is well-needed. I heard several audience members say this is something that they're looking forward to having. We don't really have a hotel in that area of Simi Valley, but there's a lot of commerce that's there and I believe this will be a huge boost to the commerce that is there, the restaurants, the businesses. So I thank you for hanging in there with us and building such a beautiful hotel. I know Fairfield very well, so I'm well aware of what the hotel structure is like and including EVCS and drought tolerant plants and being cognizant of the architecture. I think this will revitalize this area and so I'm very grateful for that. I am very disappointed to hear anti-homeless comments from the audience. To have comments attacking our houseless residents is inappropriate, to say the very least. And to attack those who are poor in our community is not something that I tolerate. We need housing here. This is part of a housing component that is needed. It's not permanent housing, but it is something that is needed here. So I want to thank you for that.
Councilman Louvenus, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but people do have a constitutional right to express themselves.
Yes. Yes, I am just expressing, you know, a defense of our houseless residents. But this is a beautiful project. I think it will, again, revitalize this area. I think it's a wonderful addition and it'll revitalize this, this business quarter. I'm really excited that, I'm definitely in favor of reducing the parking. You've done all your due diligence and shown all the research in terms of the capacity of the hotels in the area. They're never at 100% capacity, so I don't feel we'll ever have a need for that. In terms of the meeting space, I know 400 square feet is not a very big meeting space. It would be something maybe for, you know, like you said, a football team or a soccer team that's visiting to have a little pizza party, but not something where there would be a large conference and there's, you know, hundreds of people that are attending in a 400 square foot meeting room. So I can see that there wouldn't be a large need for that. And I thank you for choosing our city to do this project in. And I'm definitely in favor of reducing the parking standards. We have to think in terms of what is happening right now in our community and there are, and the studies reflect, that there are people who are in fact, you know, ride-sharing. And so you may have, you know, two families riding in a car. You may have, you know, people that are, you know, taking an Uber or in a Lyft, you know, to come here. So not everyone that stays in a hotel, not every single person has their own vehicle and that's reflected in the research and the data and the traffic studies. So I'm in favor of this ordinance change. Thank you very much.
Council member Lister?
Thank you. I do want to thank the applicant and say that we do appreciate that you have been here for many years and willing to modify and make it work. And it is a beautiful structure that you've designed and I do think there is need. I appreciate the forecasting of the economic impact to our community and I think it will be a win in many instances, certainly a win with, with people looking for a lovely place to stay as well as income to help support other good city projects, et cetera. So I appreciate all of that. What I think the concern as I, as I listen to the conversation ultimately has to do with, with changing the parking. And that's why I asked the question the first because I appreciate understanding that you went to such extent to prove that it would be adequately parked, given resources as hotels are used here in our community and elsewhere of a similar size and appointment. And so I appreciate that you went back and reiterate, had to, as I, as I read through the report, multiple times, there had to be traffic studies looked at at usage. And I appreciate also that I was initially concerned because obviously you're doing this study during COVID, which is not these, which is not the normal hotel usage times. And so that concerned me, but I recognize that you, you calculated as a percentage of actually how many, of actual occupancy. And so I appreciate that, that you were not just stating it blankly as a percentage in general, but of, of actual rooms that were rented. But it's, I want you to know that actually, I appreciate the comments that were given. I want Ms. Garfield to know, Evelyn, to know that I actually went to her restaurant on Friday evening to eat, hoping to see you so that I can ask you about your feelings about this project, understanding it's in your backyard. You weren't there, you were elsewhere. But I want you to know that I, that we, that the city tries to have good neighbors all around, want to make sure that we can work together. And so I listened carefully to your comments. I was encouraged that the applicant, I believe, was able with his, with his studies to show that it should not impact your parking. Nonetheless, what I heard was that there would be signage or could be, that we could, there could be signage indicating to your customers not to park there and also that you carefully label the parking stalls for, for your, those who are renting, or excuse me, the hotel occupants. And so I would encourage you to stay with that, just so that there is good neighborly interactions going on, because I understand that concern. But I do think you have made the case that it should not impact even on your heaviest usage times. But I am supportive of signage. With regards to continuing the wall all the way down, I, I think just for aesthetic appearance, it'd be lovely to have it, continue all the way down. But I understand that that is not anything that can be imposed on you. I might say it might be worthy of consideration of having a conversation with, with the owner just to see if that was feasible. But certainly not anything that I think we need to impose upon you. And I appreciate that you have gone out of your way to work with the neighbors in the community. And so those are my comments and thank you for doing this.
Hey, council member Judge?
I would just like also to thank the developer for choosing Simi Valley as a place to build your hotel. I think you picked a good location. You've alleviated my concerns by most of your comments and the things I've read in your proposal as far as parking and stuff. And I think the sign thing would be important to make sure that your patrons know where they're supposed to park, where they're not supposed to park. Other than that, I also want to appreciate all the citizens' comments on the project. They're all great comments and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nice project. Thank you for bringing it to Simi Valley. And thank you for answering the parking questions. Those are big questions and it's something that's important to the community, important to this council, important to the planning department. I would hope that you have an open dialogue with the folks from the junkyard because I can see where, yeah, there could be the occasion where there, there, there might be some type of conflict, but if you discuss it and have that open dialogue, responsible dialogue, those conflicts would be mitigated or at least lessened greatly. So I very much encourage you to go have coffee there or something and get to know the owners and, and, and keep in contact with them. I think working together is the easiest way to make things work. I, I sympathize with the, the folks in the back. I have two, if I was back there, would want the wall to go all the way down. It only makes sense to me. Unfortunately, that property belongs to somebody else and the only experience I've had with that type of wall, it's been one property owner, the developer, so it was easily taken care of. I don't have an answer for you and I wish I did, but I, I truly would like to see that somehow an agreement made to where it would not only help the residents that live there, which is of prime importance, but it would also clean up the, the entryway and make it more appealing to people to come use the hotel and come use the junkyard cafe. So I, I can only say I wish there was something we could do just to make it happen. But again, just like the parking issue, if you get to know the developers and give input and maybe you can make some headway there or the property owners. I, like I say, I, I just don't have an answer for you. I wish I did. But I do agree with you that it would be appropriate to be all the way down. I think that's it for my comments. Once again, thank you for a, a nice project. It, it'll bring needed hotel rooms to the community. It'll clean up an area that it's time to clean up. And I, I trust that the construction process will be not too intolerable to the residents and to the junkyard cafe and not too disturbing to their people. Of course, any type of construction is going to cause some type of discomfort, but to keep it to a minimum would be greatly appreciated. And we look forward to you seeing over that and make sure all the rules are abided by. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the modification to contingent, conditional use permit number CUPS 744, MOD number one, and the project's negative declaration and introduce an ordinance approving Simi Valley Municipal Code Amendment number Z dash S dash 751.
Second.
Motion second. Call for the vote.
Excuse me, Mayor Mashburn, did you want to add any conditions related to the signage?
Related to what?
To the signage directing patrons to only park on the hotel property.
Well, I think, so Sean, we have a, we have a condition, I think it's A8, that requires a master signage program to be submitted to the Environmental Service Department. We're going to put you in charge making sure that signs there.
Will do.
So you'll drop that motion? Thank you, Sean. Okay, call for the vote.
The motion passes with Mayor Potomac Kavanaugh absent.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. See y'all back in a few minutes. Yeah.
Thank you for the air conditioning.
Call the meeting to order.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is five public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order of which their card was submitted, followed by speakers via Zoom, who register by 3:30 PM today to speak during this public statement's item number five for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Council members cannot respond to your questions during this time, however, they may offer a response to the extent possible under agenda item 5A. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin the public statements.
Yes, I'd just like to make sure everybody's aware that what you speak on tonight is not on the agenda, so therefore we cannot have a conversation with you. What we can do is make very brief comments and maybe refer you to somebody in staff if your question is something that needs to go to staff. But it's not us being rude, it's us obeying the Brown Act, and we have our attorney here to see to it that we do obey the Brown Act. So with that, we'll move forward. Remember, you have three minutes, and after three minutes, I will ask you to end your three-minute talk. Thank you.
Jennifer Jones.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Jones. I am a resident of Simi Valley. I'm here to speak in regards to our school resource officers. I'm extremely grateful that we have them in our schools. I myself have a child in our school system, and, oh, I do like our school system. And a lot of you may not know some of the things that our school resource officers do. So I'm here to kind of mention a little bit about what they do. My favorite is Officer Gene Colado. I'm sorry, he is my favorite. And one of the things that he does is he conducts training for teachers, staff, and students on active shooters. He also mentor, mentors councils, and he guides students. He also assists with mental health issues. And one thing that one of you, a lot of you didn't know, was during the pandemic and the schools were shut down, he worked out an agreement with our school district to be able to go and check on the students that he felt were high risk, even though they were at home. And he made sure that they were safe. He wanted to make sure there was resources there to help them and let them know that he actually does care about them. He also conducts interviews with sexual abuse and child abuse victims. And he has taken, he's certified in child forensic interviewing, and he's taken multiple classes on sex trafficking. And for those of you that know, don't know, right now, human trafficking, which includes sex trafficking, is the most profitable criminal enterprise in the entire world. And I think it's great that we have a school resource officer that is trained in regards to recognizing possible human trafficking victims in our school system, so that way he can help them. And I appreciate that. I'm sure everybody else in the community does, too. He's also part of the Student Attendance Review Board, and he's a mentor for the Grizzly Academy. And I could go on and on and on. But I did want to let you know that I am very appreciative of our school resource officers, and I am extremely grateful that the city does provide that resource to our students. Thank you.
Brian Kane? Brian Kane?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Brian Kane. I'm a 32-year resident of the city of Simi Valley. I, just recently, I'm stepping into retirement from the space satellite industry, where I built DirecTV and GPS and all your XM radio satellites and things like that. I'm stepping into retirement very slowly, but I will be doing that shortly. I am a member of the board of the Madison County Community Association, which is one of our homeowner associations here in town, which I've been doing for 12 years. I would like to express my personal appreciation to the City of Simi Valley Police Department and to the several officers present this evening. Thank you, officers. I have submitted my application for the Neighborhood Council Group Four, Council Four, and I appreciate your consideration of my application. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement.
Fred Thomas?
Get it up to my height here. Mayor, council members, it's good to see you guys in person. It's a nice change from the last year and a half. Glad to be here tonight. I actually, really, the primary reason I wanted to come tonight is just to thank you for the time that you guys spend serving our community. I know at times, with the divisive political climate that we have at the moment, it may seem awfully thankless at times, but you guys are doing a good job, and I appreciate it. I'm sure that the whole community does. I also wanted to talk about our police department, and happens to be close to my heart. I currently serve as the president of the police foundation. I mentioned the political climate right now. It's a tough job to begin with. You have to understand that, you know, when you go to work, you want to please, you want, you want happy customers, right? And when most of your customers are people that you're either arresting or ticketing, it's kind of hard to have a happy customer. It's, it's a tough job, and it can be mentally grueling at times. And with the climate that we're living in right now, it's even tougher for them. So I do want to commend our department. We have a fantastic department. I think they're light years ahead of, you know, most of the departments as far as, you know, their policies and so forth and so on. They're very proactive, and I think it's, you know, one of the reasons that I believe we have the quality of life we have in our community right now is our police department and our, our, you know, living in a safe community. That's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Lapper?
Mayor and City Council, welcome back.
Mr. Lapper, could you bring your mic down? We can hear you. There you go.
How's that?
Thanks.
Mayor and City Council, welcome back. It's been a long 17 months since the public was welcomed here. Tonight, I'd like to present two issues of concern. First, I attended the 50th Simi Valley Police Department anniversary. It was a great event, recognizing our awesome Simi Valley Police Department. The highlight for me was the Chief Livingstone in the dunk take. It did afford me the opportunity to inquire about my concerns about traffic control and Simi Simi Valley. We currently only have one motorcycle patrol officer to cover 40 square miles in Simi, with apparently no plans to replace the other two. One retired, one promoted to detective. Living on Royal Avenue, I have noticed the problem with speed, distracted drivers, and accidents, and how we can possibly send a message that speeding on our Simi streets is not okay with one motorcycle traffic officer is beyond my comprehension. When I was coming here, I was down Royal, and I did see a patrol car, but obviously, I saw him, but I wasn't speeding anyways, but we need motorcycle officers to, for the deterrent, as patrol cars are no substitute. I'm pretty sure the CHP issues more tickets on Tappo Canyon than Simi Valley Police Department. What are we doing about traffic control in Simi? On August 12th, Ventura County Sheriff's is conducting a Start Smart Driving Program in Thousand Oaks for the youth. I personally took my children to Moore Park CHP for a similar class. What is Simi Valley Police doing in this regard? I would love to see a presentation by Simi Valley Police on traffic control in Simi, how many citations issued, how many accidents, and what areas of focus the community would like to see. Second is the continued problems of fireworks in Simi Valley. I'll just focus on July 4th. Commander Steve Shore provided me with some information that I requested after showing him what Ventura County Sheriff's Department put out, a nice report showing 24 citations issued for fireworks in Fillmore. Simi Valley PD had 261 total fireworks calls, 85 in-progress calls, 172 broadcasted fireworks. Guess how many citations were issued in Simi Valley? Zero. It would appear Simi Valley PD tolerates the use of illegal fireworks. Thus, the reason they continue unchecked year after year. Surely, the abusive habitual annual offenders could be found and cited. I need not remind you of the concerns surrounding illegal fireworks. I would hope the appropriate people would look into this abuse in our city, which is also occurs year-round, and perhaps have a citizens group to discuss the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Boyer.
Bruce Boyer of Chatsworth Lake Manor and candidate for Ventura County Sheriff. I'd like to bring to the people's attention the ongoing federal court case of Bruce Boyer versus the city of Simi Valley. This case, like things that are important, are only discussed in closed sessions. After the city adopted the ordinance, 4.9606, which criminalizes anybody sign on a bicycle...
Mr. Boyer, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure you understand that we do have pending litigation, and I know you're represented by legal counsel, so anything you state here outside the presence of your legal counsel could be used in a case against you.
Oh, I understand, but for legal disclaimer, I'm always spoofing. You know that, Mr. Caseras. So, I'll reserve my time. Thank you. This case came about because the city decided to make it a crime for you or me to fly an American flag from your trailer parked on a public street. Got cited for that one. It is a crime for you to park your trailer, cat tree, A-frame, or bicycle with any sign on it, all messages. So if somebody in this audience, those signs you're holding up, if you went and put that on a bicycle and parked it on a city street in Simi Valley, you're committing a misdemeanor according to the Simi Valley Municipal Code. So your free speech is not in effect in Simi Valley. This ordinance was adopted by the Simi Valley City Council in 2016. It implements a State Vehicle Code Ordinance 21100 subsection M. The city modified the ordinance. Not permissible under the California Vehicle Code Supremacy Clause. Basic legal understanding, everybody knows general law, state law, cities can't enact laws that override it. So the city is perfectly willing to criminalize our free speech. Absolutely. And I'm sharing this, I know, with council members that were not present in 2016. Well, I came for two years to implore the city to not violate our free speech, to not criminalize putting a sign on a bicycle. How far did I get? Nowhere. So in 2018, we had to file suit. You all are paying for that. So how are we doing on that? Well, the Ninth Circuit Appellate Court came down with a ruling, says the ordinance has to withstand strict scrutiny. Yeah, so since I don't have time to get explained to this, let me make sure the public knows. We should have transparency. Let's have a public forum. You tell all those people I'm lying. You tell them all I'm wrong. It's not a crime to put a sign on your bicycle or a cat tree. Tell them. Tell them some legal basis for your ordinance, and I'll take the other side, instead of let's go fight in federal court. So why doesn't the City Council have a public forum where we can discuss this? How about that, instead of fighting in federal court? So that's what I'm asking the council to do, because I can't explain it in 90 seconds, and these people have a right to know what their City Council is doing as to litigation that criminalizes their First Amendment free speech. How about it, kids?
Thank you.
Lori Mills.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for letting me speak. I really don't have anything to say except thank you for all your hard work. It's good to be in the same room with you all again. And I just, you know, something came up during this meeting that it kind of really bothered me. Caring about homeless people and poor people is not exclusive to, we all care. Putting them in our backyard is something different. I say, if you're really concerned about the poor, let's get together and do some programs and get them help for drug treatment, for mental illness. But to just throw at half the county or the city that we don't care about homeless people and we're not compassionate, it's simply not true. So out of love, let's work together. Let's stop fighting each other. Let's love this country. Let's love this city, and let's get rid of this CRT. I hope it's not coming into our, anything in our city, because it's a lie, it's divisive. And I'd like to see us all unite for the positive things of the city and the country. Thanks.
Thank you.
Cheryl Welsh.
Hello, City Council. Thank you very much for having me, having this opportunity here. First, I would just like to acknowledge all that you do for Simi Valley. I know you do a lot. We don't see it all, but I do want to thank you. This past year's challenges goes without saying, but as a resident, I do appreciate the safety and the common sense that the leaders of the city have done for us, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. My main concern, something I have been thinking about that is important to me, I hope it's okay to talk about it here, is the Bellwood proposal. Is that okay to talk about right now? Okay, okay. So this is under construction or is being proposed. I do believe it's sort of a monstrosity. It's very tall. I just, I'm going to share a little bit of my own experience here. I do live on Fairbanks Avenue, so we do have some apartments at the top of the street. They've been there since I've moved here 20 years ago. There are some condominiums that were built across from that, maybe 10, 15 years ago. I do talk to, so this is, I'm kind of, two issues with this. I do talk to a lot of people in those condominiums only because there's no parking. There used to be plenty of parking in front of my house, so now I have the opportunity to make a lot of new friends, meet a lot of new people from these apartments, because all of the parking now goes, is filtered through our neighborhood in front of our house. But what a lot of people say, a lot of people are here from the valley, and they do express how much they enjoy Simi Valley, especially coming from the valley. I came from the valley, so I feel the same way, how peaceful it is, how beautiful it is. It has a rural charm to it. It still has it, not as much as it did 20 years ago. But that Bellwood construction, along with other proposals, I think maybe Cochrane, I don't really have an opinion on the Fairfield, it's the first I've ever heard of it, but four stories is a bit high. I mean, our logo is the hills, so if we have something that high, especially on Tappo and Alamo, one, aesthetically, we can't see anything. Two, infrastructure, I've already, you know, from personal experience, being on Fairbanks Avenue with those new developments, there's no infrastructure, there's no parking, there's more crime. We have a lot of that, we have a lot of things that happen on that street, namely because of that, those condos that are there. Nice people, but again, you're going to get a lot of riffraff, you're going to get a lot of people, and again, I'm compassionate as well, I have a heart and a burden for the homeless, it has nothing to do with that. But again, this isn't necessarily something that I want in my neighborhood. I have children. Again, it's not a big deal. I love talking to people, and I usually make friends with those people. Another thing that I wanted to mention was the lack of, I know you've been working with, I think it's called, I used to call it Mad Era, but I think it's the Madera Brewing Company, so I'm really excited about that. I think we need other things in this town besides bowling and movie theater, something like a Dave and Buster's. We have Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, it's empty, we have the Mountain Gate Plaza, we have so many empty buildings in this town, but yet we're building more. Why are we building more? Why are we using what we already have? It doesn't make any sense. Thank you. Dave and Buster's would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rocky Rhodes.
Mr. Mayor, Council Members, City Manager, and Staff, I came here, my name is Rocky Rhodes, I'm a resident of Simi Valley in the beautiful Bridle Pass neighborhood, and I came here tonight for two reasons. One was to support my friends Evelyn and Tony of the Junkyard and their concerns about parking, which I think was resolved very well, and thank you for your careful consideration of that. The second was simply to say, seeing you in person instead of a little box on a screen is awesome. You all have been dressing up for these meetings. I put on a jacket and actual pants to watch the City Council meeting this time instead of shorts and a t-shirt. But all of the families of Simi Valley have had troubles, efforts, to deal with COVID in our families and in our businesses. You all showed up, and you've been here, meeting after meeting, present to do the work of the city, and we appreciate it, all of you. We appreciate the fact that you were here, and we accommodated via Zoom, we got the job done, and we still obviously have work to do to get through this Delta variant of COVID, but I'm extremely proud of all of you and thankful for all of you for being on the dais and representing us. Thank you.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you.
Sheila Johnson.
Hi. As you said, my name is Sheila Johnson. I've lived in Simi Valley for 26 years, and I actually spoke to the City Council first time remotely back in May, and I had a problem with the connection, so when I heard it was going to be in person, I thought I'd come and give it another try. My husband and I are of mixed ethnicities, and I love my family, just the cultures that is part of my family. And I only mention this because of the divisiveness, the division that certain parties have been interjecting into our community. It is not appreciated. My family and I live in the township area, I think that's Neighborhood One, and my children went to school here in Simi Valley. And I and my family, we love Simi Valley. We love it for its beauty and also the security and the warmth of the people here, and how we were actually embraced when we moved here. It was wonderful. And I want to just stress that, how awesome Simi Valley is, and I love how it promotes the values, most of the values, my values, what I call the American values, of inclusiveness and liberty and justice for all. I really, really appreciate that. So I want to thank my city government, the mayor, I want to thank the police department, and all the first responders for doing such a great job in running Simi Valley and keeping it as welcoming as it was back when I first arrived, and especially during this, these difficult times that our nation is going through. So I've now been awakened, and I want to say that I'm going to get much more involved in civic matters and support the people that have been supporting my city. So thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Joe Pachowski.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, Members of the City Council. My name's Joe Pachowski, and I live here in Simi Valley over in District Four in Wood Ranch. Again, like all, like a lot of our other speakers tonight, I'm just, wanted to come out tonight because tonight's the first night that you've had the public available to come here and comment in person in 16 months, you know? And like so many of our fellow residents, I want to thank you guys for continuing to show up, week after, meeting after meeting, week after week. You know, our city staff has done a great job keeping the city moving, the police department as well. I want to thank, thank all of our city employees, including the police department, for the job that they've been doing through this pandemic. And that's basically about all I wanted to say, you know, tonight. But I'd be remiss if I didn't point one piece of hypocrisy out. We have a council member here tonight who has chosen, her choice, to wear a mask, but at the same time, she's okay with not wearing a mask indoors to suit her campaign purposes. I don't know about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no more speakers, and we have no speakers on Zoom. No, no longer.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is 5A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the meeting tonight and speaking, if you did speak, and if you didn't speak and just came out, thank you for being here. It does me a lot of good to see everybody sitting out there, masks or no masks. I also wanted to point out one thing, if we're pointing out who doesn't like the poor people or who likes the poor people more, I always want to point out that the city of Simi Valley is the only city in Ventura County that has a magnificent facility that treats the poor, treats anybody of any financial status. It's called our Free Clinic. It provides medical services, dental services, legal services, everything else, free of charge, and there is no other facility like it in our county. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, and I echo Councilmember Mike Judge's comments about, it is a delight, it is very refreshing to see people in person, and I appreciate, I was appreciative that Ms. Johnson mentioned that, if I understood her, what she had to say, that she joined us in May and had some difficulties with online, and yet willing to show up in person and continue the fight to converse with us, and thank you for doing that, and we look forward to ongoing conversations. In 16 months, it's been very long, long overdue, so appreciate your being here and participating and all the many comments that are being made. Just a quick comment to Ms. Welsh, who was, mentioned her concerns about the Bellwood construction. There are lots of reasons why that went, why it is where, what's happening there. I was appreciative, at least, that we got concessions that, at least in front, it's not going to be four stories, it's three stories. It is concerning, of course, that we want to see our beautiful hillside, but I'm hopeful, we fought the fight, and I'm hopeful that it will end up being positive for our community. So that's all I wanted to say, and again, thank you for all being here tonight.
Councilmember Wepenos.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's wonderful to see so many of our residents and neighbors, those of you who are not residents, coming out to engage in the local government process. This is what democracy is, this is what your local government is for you to be able to come out. And just to be clear, we were always available through these past 17 months. There was always opportunity for you to comment, to email, to speak via Zoom, and I do want to laud our employees, because they did a phenomenal job with all the technology and to be able to pivot on a dime and make sure that City Council meetings were available to everyone. I just really want to applaud all of our city employees who did that. Thank you so much for doing that. And thank you for acknowledging all of us here on the dais and city employees. You know, we don't, this is not a full-time job, we don't get paid like a full-time job. We truly do this because we are all public servants, and we know what that means. So thank you for acknowledging our work up here on the dais. We really appreciate that. Thank you. on the dais, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, from myself, first of all, I agree with the speaker that spoke so highly of Officer Jean Colletto. That guy does a fantastic job and is much appreciated. To Mr. John Lapper, please make an appointment with my office, I'd love to get together with you and discuss fireworks. Joe, I agree with your comments about staff. All too often, we leave here and we don't recognize staff for all the fine work they do, and they have continued to do through this COVID pandemic. And so, thank you, I agree with you. I'm going to read you a short letter. Background, on Monday, July 5th, 2021, in the late afternoon, I had a tire blowout on the westbound 118 freeway near the Kuenner Drive exit. I was able to exit the freeway and go to the corner gas station. Officer Charier, while off duty and in casual attire, approached my car and inquired if I needed help. I share my written message, I share my written message that my Parkinson's disease had affected my speech, so Officer Charier called AAA on my behalf and confirmed that help was on the way. His simple gesture of concern and helpfulness for another in need is a clear counterpoint to a lack of appreciation for the difficult tasks the police face each day. Officer Charier should be commended for his awareness that I may need help, his patience while I tried to communicate my issue, his kindness in assisting me to contact the AAA while being understanding of my stressed and modest and calm in his demeanor. Officer Charier is a credit to the city of Simi Valley and to the Simi Valley Police Department. Signed, Ned Fenton. I think that speaks for itself of what our officers are able to do. Okay, next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar. And just to note for the record, during agenda review, consent item number six was recommended to be pulled for continuance. There are two resolutions for your consideration on the consent calendar this evening. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Consent item number five, resolution number 2021-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, accepting the public improvements for track number 5993, located on the northwest corner of Codota Street and Big Springs Avenue. And consent item seven, a resolution number 2021-31, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, approving citywide publicly available pay schedule in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5.
Okay, does anybody have anything other than six, it's out, that you would like to discuss?
May I have a question on consent item number four?
Number four. Okay, anybody else?
I have a question on the same item. So, number four.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could I move to approve the rest of the consent calendar except for item number four, so it can be discussed?
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Mayor Potem Kavanaugh absent.
And discussions regarding four questions. Councilmember Lepanos?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. I just wanted to know if these contracts went through a competitive bid process or if that was required. Some of these are pretty large, they're for a million, well, there's one for over a million dollars and half a million dollars, so I just wanted to know if they went through the competitive bid process, or if they were required to go through that.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, they did, they all went through the competitive bid process. We did receive, we would have done it just like we would have, independent of the council's recess, so they were all competitively bid.
Okay, and if the public wants to see that, then they can see that, that's available?
More than happy to share.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, want to make a motion for four?
Actually, that was virtually, I was, my question was about particularly the 1.213 million contracted for roof repair and remodeling, and the selection process, and whether it was-
And more than happy to share, we got three bids. One was pulled back by the contractor because they made mistakes in their bid, so we ended up with two. They were, what, around $40,000 apart-ish, $50,000 apart, and this was the lowest responsible bidder.
Well, I'm just really glad this is getting done, for the record.
We wanted to move forward as fast as we can on this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move consent item four.
I second.
Motion to second, consent item four, call for the vote.
Motion passes with Mayor Potem Kavanaugh absent. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 7A, second reading of ordinance number 1323 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish single-room occupancy, SRO, housing unit standards and requirements in the commercial plant development CPD zoning district and mixed-use MU overlay district, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. The reading of the ordinance is as follows, ordinance number 1323, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Simi Valley for Z-S-750, amending portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish single-room occupancy, SRO, housing unit standards and requirements in the commercial plant development CPD zoning district and mixed-use MU overlay district, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as amended. And staff is available for questions.
This is a second reading, I would so move that we pass this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Mayor Potem Kavanaugh absent. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8A, review and approve the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center 2021-2025 strategic plan, and David Yoshitomi will be sent in this item.
I'll note also, we have Fred Hessel, that is our, our general manager at the Cultural Arts Center on Zoom as well.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the city council. Tonight, I am pleased to be here with Fred Hessel, the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center General Manager, and Kelly Tinker, Management Analyst, to present to you this five-year strategic plan for the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. This presentation will summarize some of the key findings of the strategic plan process, including an operational assessment, the SWOT analysis, the impact of the cultural arts center in the community. It will establish the five-year vision for the, and the strategic direction for the cultural arts center. Included in this presentation is an overview of the goals developed to support the six strategic priorities contained within this plan. Here now to provide the overview of the strategic plan process, SWOT analysis, and key findings is Kelly Tinker.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. The strategic plan is the result of a two-year process to create an innovative strategic direction for the Cultural Arts Center. The vision is built on a foundation of community feedback. COVID-19's financial impact and renewed discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives influence development of the plan. To provide a multipurpose, I'm sorry, this is the mission statement for the Cultural Arts Center, to provide a multipurpose facility to present performances of music, theater, dance, film, lectures, and popular entertainment, as well as space for conferences, meetings, seminars, and workshops, and to develop, support, and encourage cultural activities and educational programs to enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Simi Valley and surrounding communities. Cultural Arts Center's core values are community, a commitment to the whole community, from the theater goer to arts organizations, recognizing the role of the Cultural Arts Center in contributing to the overall well-being and quality of life of Simi Valley and its residents. Diversity, acknowledging and respecting human qualities that are different from our own and outside the groups with which we are associated. The spectrum of diversity within our community is recognized and celebrated. And accountability, understanding the responsibility of the Cultural Arts Center to provide arts experiences for all Simi Valley residents while maintaining a balance of fiscal stewardship, community impact, and the highest level of service. The bulk of the findings of this plan came from stakeholder feedback. Community input for the strategic plan was collected through an online survey, community visioning forum, focus groups, stakeholder meetings, informal interviews with the public members of the Arts Commission. Based on this community input, a SWOT analysis was completed to get a better look at the whole of the Cultural Arts Center to better understand its needs. Strengths, such as the center's longstanding reputation for excellence in its programming and performances, allow for additional focus to be placed on potential weaknesses, like shifting reliance from policies or practices that may be outdated to those that offer more effective or efficient means of delivering service. Additional opportunities include the ability to collaborate with outside organizations to find new and innovative means of operating, especially in the wake of threats like COVID-19, which has had such a drastic and unpredictable effect on arts in the community. The Cultural Arts Center operates on a hybrid financial model, supported primarily through subsidy from the general fund and Cultural Arts Center operating revenue. Operating revenue, city reimbursements, and Cultural Arts Center net income are on pace to increase year over year for the past three years. On the left here, you'll see that the Cultural Arts Center's revenue resources are comprised of operating revenue, general fund subsidy, and a small portion which is contributions and grants. On the right of those overall resources, resource utilization shows how we're spending these funds. Forty-one percent to salaries and benefits, which is representing a healthy low relatively, with an also healthy robust program expense of 28%, also relatively speaking, and a 12% overall reimbursement back to the city. This is all totaling $1.3 million in total resources in 2021, with an approximate $1.29 million in spend. Cultural Arts Center put on 400 events and averages 37,000 visitors annually. As you can see in this corresponding word cloud, terms taken directly from the data gathered through our stakeholder engagement, our residents described the Cultural Arts Center with words like "community," "family," "beautiful," "fun," and "home." These terms, this indicates impacts are felt both at the individual and the community level. Cultural Arts Center is in a relative position of strength, with many healthy attributes, and can be aggressive in strategy development while remaining mindful of associated risks to ensure they are connected to the mission of the CAC and the goals of this plan. The current uncertain landscape will require some flexibility and consistent evaluation to ensure that we're on track with the implementation of the plan overall. I'm handing this back over to David Yoshitomi for the review of our plan's strategic priorities and the rest of our goals.
Thank you, Kelly. So the elements of this strategic plan are built off the accomplishments of the Cultural Arts Center over the past 25 years. They also acknowledge the challenges facing the organization and the changes in the operational landscape that have occurred. Together, these lay the foundation for the strategic direction for the future, designed to achieve a version, a vision that will allow for the Cultural Arts Center to expand its audiences, celebrate the spectrum of diversity, deepen its community engagement, balance fiscal stewardship with community impact, support and empower the arts community, and reinforce the importance of the arts in Simi Valley. The six strategic priorities of this plan are based on recurring themes that emerged from the community survey, visioning forums, stakeholder meetings, and focus groups, and the SWOT analysis. Supporting goals, strategies, and tactics were developed for each of the strategic priorities. As this plan covers substantial ground and in the interest of time, this presentation focuses on each of the goals connected to the strategic priorities. If the city council has any questions on specific strategies and tactics contained in the plan document, we are happy to discuss them as well. So the first strategic priority is quality of life. And the quality of life of the strategic priority is directly connected to the Cultural Arts Center mission statement. The Cultural Arts Center contributes to the quality of life in Simi Valley by providing artistic, cultural, and educational programs to the community. Achieving the two goals in this category will increase the community access to the Cultural Arts Center, expands arts programming from beyond its walls, and increase the ability of the center to contribute to the social fabric and well-being of the community. The first goal in the quality of life is to attract new artists, arts organizations, and audiences to ensure facility use and attendance figures better match Simi Valley demographics by 2025. Goal two is to include the arts in more aspects of Simi Valley, reaching beyond the walls of the Cultural Arts Center, seeing an increase in opportunities for all Simi Valley residents. Achieving this goal will allow for the Cultural Arts Center to utilize the transformative power of the arts to contribute to the overall well-being and quality of life in the community. Some example tactics in this area might include art walks, art markets, outdoor concerts, or other types of community arts events to support economic development and community development, also known as placemaking. The second strategic priority is sustainability. The three sustainability goals ensure stable revenue streams, maximize organizational efficiency, and provide transparent, accurate, and accountable reporting. The first goal under sustainability is to safely reopen the Cultural Arts Center to full operational capacity by restoring revenue and facility use figures to at least 2019-2020 projections by June 30th, 2023. Second, the goal is to ensure transparent, accountable, and sustainable operation of the Cultural Arts Center while achieving a cost recovery rate of at least 10% to the general fund. And the third sustainability goal is develop collaborative fundraising initiatives with the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation to support the growth of the Endowment Fund. Essentially, that's aligning and working with the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation to align fundraising and programming goals every year. The third strategic priority in this plan is programming, and that's ensure that the Cultural Arts Center provides overarching choices and arts experiences that represent the taste of all Simi Valley residents, increasing new audience attendance by 10% every year. This means to provide arts programming experiences and opportunities to meet the diverse community needs of Simi Valley. The focus of the programming goals are to expand the community programming choices available to the community, especially in the area of arts education and supporting emerging artists. And specifically under goal, these, goal one, and then also goal two, which is to increase Tuesday, Thursday facility use levels to the development of low-risk, high-engagement arts experiences, is to really increase the demand on the center on those off nights. Everybody does like to go out on Friday, Saturday night to see a show, but the intention of these two goals here is to figure out the opportunities to increase attendance and participation in center activities on, say, a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday night. And a relatively low-hanging fruit solution would be to, you know, dance classes, arts education programs, those things that don't require the use of the main stage but can still bring people into the center. Third programming goal is to establish the Cultural Arts Center as the foremost arts education program resource in Simi Valley, increasing the amount of arts education programs and programs to support emerging audience, audience, I'm sorry, artists. This can be done through understanding the arts programs offered in the community and developing programs that either complement or differ from what is currently offered. This entails studying feasibility and interest of arts education in outside-the-bots programs such as playwriting, poetry, electronic music production, creative coding, and other arts education programs not offered in the region. And again, it's not to compete with the program offered in Santa Susana, but to find out alternative programs that could actually further supplement the arts offerings in the city. The next strategic priority is marketing outreach and community partnerships, and the goals here are designed to increase the community awareness of the Cultural Arts Center and participation in its programs. This can be done through improved community outreach methods and the development of relationships in the community. The first goal here is to develop and execute a marketing and outreach strategy that ensures that 100% of Simi Valley residents have participated in a Cultural Arts Center activity by 2025. And now, while this goal may not be obtainable, it is something that the Cultural Arts Center's marketing and communication and outreach efforts can strive for by engaging all members of the community and encourage them to participate in the center offerings. Goal two here is to increase formal, large, and small-scale relationships with organizations such as the Rancho Simi Recreation and Parks District, Simi Valley Unified- such as the Rancho Simi Recreation and Parks District, Simi Valley Unified School District, and the Ventura County Arts Council, and other local arts organizations. This goal can be done through discovering shared objectives and developing policies that encourage use from other community organizations. The next strategic priority is facility and experience, and this is to create a Cultural Arts Center experience compatible with Simi Valley's small-town feel where audience members report a one hundred percent satisfaction rate. And the reason why facility and experience became a strategic priority here was that stakeholder feedback demonstrated the important role of the Cultural Arts Center facility in the community. Goals for this strategic priority recognize this role and allow the Cultural Arts Center to create arts experiences tailored specifically to Simi Valley. These will be done through improving our audience engagement methods, defining the Cultural Arts Center experience, and creating opportunities to participate in Center activities at a variety of price points. Second goal in this area is to ensure the facility stays in prime condition to maximize public use and accomplish the mission of the Cultural Arts Center. This will ensure the Cultural Arts Center facility has the ability to adapt as much as possible to meet shifts in community needs and accomplish its mission. Finally, the last goal of this plan is arts leadership and advocacy, and this allows for the support and development of local artists and arts organizations. This can be done through arts specifically legislation, policy, and community planning. And the one goal here is to reinforce the arts as a vital, integral, and necessary component of life in Simi Valley by strengthening local artists, arts organizations, and cultural groups through increased consideration and presence of arts policy decisions and legislation. Additional strategies under arts leadership and advocacy include the development of funding models to support the arts community, expanding the role of the Simi Valley Arts Commission, and increasing the city's presence as a resource for arts organizations and arts projects. So the format of the plan provides evaluation reporting structure, and Kelly has mentioned with the onset of COVID and the uncertainty just within the immediate future, not alone five years down the line, we're looking at an evaluation and reporting structure, or this plan necessitates an evaluation and reporting structure that is constantly adapting, looking at the information coming in, and making decisions on whether or not what the strategies and tactics are being effective here. So the evaluation and reporting structure for this plan includes monthly updates from Cultural Arts Center staff to the Deputy Community Services Director and Assistant City Manager. A strategic plan update will be a standing agenda item at each Arts Commission meeting. And the annual operating budget and operating plan will monitor resource allocation, the budget essentially, and tactics. And through that, the annual operating budget and operating plan is approved, reviewed by the Arts Commission, and then ultimately approved by City Council every fiscal year. So what will the Cultural Arts Center look like in 2025 if we are successful in the implementation of this plan? Well, we'll be reaching new audiences and artists, we'll be representative of all Simi Valley residents, fully engaged and responsive to the community, creating a sustainable and lasting impact, and integrating the arts into more aspects of life in Simi Valley. I would like to take a moment here to thank everyone who participated in this plan and provided their input to contribute to the vision of the Cultural Arts Center. Staff is grateful for the sharing of their time and their feedback on the Cultural Arts Center and their vision for the future. And up on the screen here, you see there is considerable community impact and people that participated in this plan. So the Simi Valley Arts Commission reviewed the strategic plan at their May 19, 2021 meeting and is recommending City Council review and approve the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center 2021 to 2025 strategic plan as presented. And this concludes the presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Questions of staff?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm looking at, thank you very much for the presentation, it was very thorough. I'm looking at page 10 and page 11 of the strategic plan, and, you know, I was, I'm hoping that at some point the CAC, the Cultural Arts Center, is financially independent. And what I'm seeing on page 11 is that sixty percent is still general fund subsidy, so the total income, more than half of the funding for the Cultural Arts Center is still coming out of the general fund. Is that, that's what is indicated there, is that correct?
That's the current, let me pull up the page here, but that's, those are the 2018, 2019 numbers, everything was, that's the most current and complete fiscal year.
So this is pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic, we were subsidizing by sixty percent?
Yes, and then that's the, yes.
Okay, and forty percent of the, what I saw, forty percent of the one point two eight nine, almost one point three million dollar budget is going to salaries and benefits, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was the figure that you quoted?
I'm just looking at the pie chart on page 11, forty percent of salary benefits, so pretty much all the salary and benefits are being paid for by the city, is that correct? Out of the general fund?
Yes, the city subsidizes the Cultural Arts Center, General Manager, the Assistant Manager, and one box office assistant, I believe it's an office assistant is the exact classification, and then the Cultural Arts Center pays for one point five for the Technical Director and another office assistant.
And I'm just curious, because some of these costs seem, it said a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for custodial services. Is, do we have like a full-time custodian, is that why that's so high, or it's just that how much, like we have a whole crew, or?
Those are the estimated custodial services, that includes, I believe, supplies as well as staff. The custodial crew is there every day of operation, similar to any of the other city facilities.
Was that during the pandemic as well?
I can't speak to that specifically as their schedule, again, these numbers are twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen.
Maybe City Manager, can you answer that?
We would not have had staff, or custodial staff on a regular basis at the Cultural Arts Center. It wasn't open, there was no need for them to be there.
Okay, will there be an increased cost when we reopen, if we're still in a pandemic, for sanitation and things like that?
Potentially, as one of the goals, or I'm sorry, one of the tactics is actually to reopen the Cultural Arts Center and to do so safely. So what that will entail specifically as far as sanitation and those type of routines remains to be seen, I believe the Cultural Arts Center is developing a plan for that.
Is there a plan anywhere in here for the Cultural Arts Center to function so that they do not have to receive sixty percent subsidy from the city, from the general fund?
No, there's not.
David, let me ask you a question, sixty percent subsidy, I'm looking at the, at ten, the income?
Yeah, can I give my calculation that I, because I was looking at it myself? What I noted is that seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars was the general fund contribution, that a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-six dollars of that was returned. So the total contribution was six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. So if we divided that amount by the total costs of the operations, which is one point two eight, not eight, nine million, basically I got a number of point four eight percent after it's returned, that basically, that, so our total contribution from the general fund in fiscal year 2018-19, I came to actually forty-eight percent as being the, I mean, I don't know about my calculations, but I-
Correct, because there is a reimbursement back for a number of staff positions.
So less than, less than fifty percent actually, actually, when the dust settles that year came from, from the general fund, at least by my calculation.
I don't know if that includes grants, because I know we do give grants. So not only do we subsidize the Cultural Arts Center, but then we also give grants as well, is that correct?
There is a nonprofit rate that's offered for nonprofit groups to perform at the theater, which is a discount, but the Cultural Arts Center nor their Arts Commission does not provide grants at the moment. That is an element of the strategic plan that we would look towards developing grant programs to support our local arts community through that, but at this time, there is not a formal grant program executed by the Cultural Arts Center.
Okay, so the city does not provide any grants to the Cultural Arts Center? Like through Waste Management or?
I'm not aware of, unless Fred does, you know, Fred, you're hanging out there, I'm not aware of any grants that we've provided.
Is he online, can he answer that question?
I am online.
Hey Fred, can you answer that question for me, please?
Yes, at this time, no, we have not recently received any grants from the city.
Okay, in the past?
In the past, early on, probably fifteen or more years ago, we received some CDVG grant monies, but we have not received any major grant monies from the city in the past fifteen years that I'm aware of.
Fred, I think the question, the Cultural Arts Center is not providing grants to organizations?
I know, receiving grants from the city, like, yeah, like, like there's stuff we vote on and we give grants out, and we pass on those grants as a city council to the Cultural Arts Center. I'm trying to reconcile though, you know, forty-eight percent versus sixty percent. I guess I'm trying to figure out where that came from, but, so, you know, I'm just curious. I heard integration of the arts, so is there other, but when we looked at the mission statement, there were other things, you know, like speakers and things like that, like is there any consideration of that, like, you know, TED Talks coming here, or, you know, there's other, there's speakers, like, when I was in college, I worked at the Lissner Auditorium at GW, and we didn't just have concerts there, there were, you know, talks and speakers, and, you know, yes, there were art exhibits and things like that, but there was, what I've been hearing is that, you know, there's a variety of uses that people in the community have seen that they would like to use the Cultural Arts Center for, and I'd like to know if that's a consideration in, you know, making sure we utilize this, because what I would like to see, the direction I would like to see the Cultural Arts Center in, is going in being financially independent from the city.
Fred, can you address what you've got coming in, what you're looking at to come into the Center in that regard?
I can, we do, we do look to start expanding our programming to include speaker series, film series, storytelling series from the community. So finding ways for more of the community to have access to utilize the facility in addition to our normal concerts and musicals and art shows and things like that. So we're really looking to expand programming, and we've listed a lot of that in the, in the actual strategic plan, you'll notice some of those in the, David, help me out with the word here, what's it called?
Programming.
Yeah, the programming, but in the strategic plan, there are several things listed that we're looking at, we're looking at including, but yes, we are looking into having a speaker series, also having like the Simi Speaks, which is a local storytelling idea, and also utilizing the downstage area for some of those smaller events as well.
If, I'd like to add that, being on the Commission along with another council member, that since I've been there, which has been three or four years now, I've seen nothing but attempts to strive to bring in more revenue. It's always in the, it seems to be in the mind of the operator staff and Fred, is anything that they can do to put together programs that bring more revenue. They made the facility more available dates, and they have increased programming, and they did this during COVID. So now at COVID, of course, we're going to have a reduction of income based on being shut down for so long, but the attitude and the desire and what everybody's working for is more revenue constantly. Now, to say, yes, it's revenue to make us self-supporting, I don't know, do you need to say those words, or do you, since it is the city and they are producing more revenue, I'm sure once it gets to a point where more can return to the city, and I don't think the Cultural Arts Center staff would like to see anything more than to be able to be self-sufficient, but that's just not possible at this time. But they're certainly working towards that end goal, and that's what I've seen since I've been on the Commission, and I have to salute Fred, since he's taken over, we've seen many good moves that does bring in more revenue even in these trying times.
And I'd love to make just a general statement, I know initially it was questions, but I think we cannot underestimate the importance of arts in our community, and I have to admit, I was almost disappointed when this was on our agenda because audience members get tired and they've gone home. I'm just hoping people had opportunity to watch this report online, because this is so critical and important to our community. I really appreciate the fact that one of the goals stated is to provide a hundred percent resident exposure to the Cultural Arts Center by 2025. Obviously, there is a cost involved, but I think we have to weigh that with a tremendous value. I just wanted to share just a few quick thoughts. The Arts Council of England makes a statement, "Life without the collective resources of our libraries, museums, theaters, galleries, or without the personal expression of literature, music, and art would be static and sterile. No creative arguments about the past, no diverse and stimulating present, and no dreams the future." And then the, in AmericansForTheArts.org states, "The arts can open dialogue among diverse groups by creating safe spaces for engagement, thus allowing new relationships to take root. They help us understand and bridge cultural distinctions. They contribute to economic opportunity and community vitality. They enhance our quality of life." And finally, I just want to leave with you the thoughts of Jamie Bennett, who made this statement recently, and he's the Executive Director of Art Place America, and he was speaking to a group, and this is what he stated, and I think it really applies to our community. Artists are the one asset that exists in every community. Not every community has a waterfront, or public transportation, or a major hospital or university to anchor it, but every community has people who sing and dance and tell stories, and we need to invite those people into the work of strengthening the social, physical, and economic conditions of our communities. Research shows that art helps create social cohesion, community attachment, and civic engagement, three ingredients of a stable community. And so I don't mean to motor on, but I think we need to commend you for this vision, and I think we are, I personally am behind this commitment that we need those three ingredients for our community. And so, anyway, I'm very excited for what you're doing here and very supportive. So that's, I just had to make those comments, because I think it's just so critical for our community. Thank you.
Mayor, may I continue asking questions?
Yes, you may, sure.
Thank you. With regard to the, I didn't see a breakdown that seemed reflective to me of the shifting demographic in our community when it came to those who were included in the strategic plan. Is, is, I don't know who, you know, how widely it was distributed, or to how many people, or, you know, what kind of input was given, or if there's still opportunity to be given, but, you know, I did see, and when we were during the pandemic, I did see a huge response to the multicultural activity that were done collaboratively with the Youth Council. You know, there's no reason why we can't continue to do those kinds of activities. There is a new era now because of COVID, where there are people that would like to engage in these kinds of activities, and the truth is that it's not a very large theater, you know? The reason why Santa Susana doesn't do anything there is because their theater is bigger than our Cultural Arts Center. So we have to pivot in terms of how do we use that space effectively, and what kind of programming can be done there, which is going to be different. And I agree with Councilwoman Littster, I, as an arts teacher in a continuation high school, dealing with traumatized, underserved students, the arts have, you know, saved many of my students and many teachers who have used them as a coping mechanism, but, you know, there has to be a wide variety and diverse perspective, and if we want to reach out to everybody, then we have to reach out to that. What I've heard from a lot of the youth is, these are shows that my mom would watch, or my grandma would watch, like, they're not things I want to see, I want to see bands that are, you know, that are more related to my generation. And so that's the kind of programming that I think should be focused on if we do want to reach everyone and reach a new generation. I, you know, there's something to the classics, yes, absolutely, you know, Fiddler on the Roof is great, but, you know, not a lot of sixteen-year-olds want to go see Fiddler on the Roof, you know, it's not really their thing. So I think that's something that needs to be considered. I would like a goal of this Cultural Arts Center to be eventually not dependent on general fund funds, especially not so much of the general funds, whether it's forty-eight percent or sixty percent. I think that's a goal that needs to be put in there, and if you don't ever put the goal into the strategic plan, then it will never be a goal, there will just be this constant dependency on, you know, Simi Valley taxpayer money, and I'm not saying it's not a worthy investment, but we would like, if one of the core values is accountability, right? Because that's one of the three core values that you mentioned at the beginning, is that correct? So if accountability is one of the core values of the strategic plan, then we have to have accountability, we have to look at what is the effective use of our dollars, right, in our funding, to make this an independent, you know, an independent theater, and just because it's a small theater, doesn't mean it can't be financially successful and independent so that it's not dependent- so that it's not dependent on general fund dollars all the time. So that's what I would like to see as part of the strategic plan, that eventually, maybe not in five years, but in ten years, that we get to that point. There are, like I said, there has to be a modification of what kind of, you know, activities you can have in a smaller theater, so comedy, you know? I know that a lot of the theater, I've had comedians that have come to me and said, well, you know, where can I do a comedy show in Simi Valley? And, you know, I'm like, well, you could do the, you know, the Cultural Arts Center. But I've seen a lot of comedians that have gone to the, the movie theaters, you know, that have gone to Studio Movie Girl. And I'm glad they're coming to Simi Valley in general. But I would like to see that kind of stuff that is, is offered. You're looking to fill those Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights? Those are the kinds of things that I think, you know, would appeal to a different generation than the generation that has been consistently going to the Cultural Arts Center. And if it's about exposing different generations and getting everyone to go by two thousand twenty-five, we have to take that into account.
Excuse me, I think it's, it's not time to discuss the programming. We're looking at a strategic plan, two members of this council are on that commission. I think it's time to call for the question.
Yes, Mayor, and with all due respect, the reason I'm giving my input is because I asked to be on that commission, and I was denied that opportunity. So this is the only opportunity that I get to give input.
That's fine, I think I've given you plenty of opportunity, and now I'm saying it's time to come to a conclusion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the staff's recommendation for the strategic plan.
And I'll second it, and so this is just, this is a movement just to accept the, the report and the strategic, correct? Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion second, call for the vote.
I'm going to vote no, simply because I'd like to see a long-term plan for financial independence, and meaning the core goal of accountability.
Okay. Go ahead and call for the vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Luvanos voting no, Mayor Potem Kavanagh absent. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the next item on the agenda is item eight B, consideration of a Simi Valley Municipal Code text amendment to Title One, Chapter Four, adding a new section one dash zero four point zero five regarding City Council reconsideration of prior actions that are the subject of pending litigation, potential adoption of an urgency ordinance, and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinances is as follows. Urgency ordinance number one three two five, and urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, adding section one dash zero four point zero five to chapter four of the Title One of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to expressly authorize the City Council to reconsider actions that are the subject of pending litigation, provided that a public hearing process occur on the matter being reconsidered and making findings with respect thereto. And ordinance number one three two six, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, adding section one dash zero four point zero five to chapter four of Title One of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to expressly, expressly authorize the City Council to reconsider actions that are the subject of pending litigation, provided that a public hearing process occur on the matter being reconsidered. And interim City Attorney Caseros is here for this presentation.
All right, real quickly, City Staff has recognized that there may be circumstances where the City Council may wish to reconsider certain matters that previously became, came before it, and which resulted in a final decision and ensuing litigation, and to do so in an expeditious manner that may reduce the cost or the need for continued litigation. The proposed addition to the Simi Valley Municipal Code would make it clear that the City Council has the express authority to reconsider any action taken by the City Council in a matter that is the subject of pending litigation at the time of reconsideration, provided that there is a public hearing process that occurs on the matter being reconsidered. So as a result, I recommend that the City Council consider adopting urgency ordinance number one three two five. Here, we would require a vote of four out of the four that are present, as well as introducing for first reading ordinance number one three two six, amending the Simi Valley Municipal Code to add a provision regarding the express City Council authority to reconsider prior actions that are the subject of pending litigation, provided that a public hears, public hearing process occur on the matter that's being reconsidered. That's my recommendation.
Okay, any questions of City Attorney?
I do have one quick question. And I, I see the need for this and the importance of this. I guess my, my question is, is there a reason to limit it to expressly, something that is in litigation, for instance? Would there ever be occasion, for instance, that we might want to revisit something? Let's say additional evidence came forward, or funds were available that we weren't aware? I guess I'm wondering if there is other instances, when it would be nice if we had that authority to revisit quickly something?
There, there might be, but in this particular circumstance, I wanted to see if we can get the council to approve this on an urgency basis.
And those others would not be urgency, I got you. Okay, so we could revisit this for other things, okay?
Yes.
That makes complete sense, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question about the public hearing. The public hearing process would, would that occur during a regular City Council meeting? And would the same notification be given?
Yes.
Okay.
And yes.
Okay.
Mayor, motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the urgency ordinance number thirteen twenty-five, adding a new section one dash zero four point zero five to chapter four of Title One of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to expressly authorize the City Council to reconsider prior actions that are the subject of pending litigation, provided that a public hearing process occur on the matter being reconsidered, and to introduce for final reading ordinance number one three two six as a backup.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Mayor Potem Kavanagh absent. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, next on the agenda is item nine A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay, Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my report will be very short, as I haven't done too much since we were last in session. On Saturday, June twenty-sixth, I did attend the Revolve Real Estate Grand Opening on behalf of the City Council and presented then with a certificate of achievement. Friday, July ninth, I attended the VCTC meeting via Zoom. Wasn't too much new to report there, I made sure that every council member got copies of all the Caltrans reports for our area. And on, Thursday, July twenty-second, I attended a discussion for plans up at the Simi Valley Town Center with the new owners of the town center. Their plans will be a breath of fresh air to a lot of people here in the city, and they're, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what they're going to do. I can't wait, everybody else gets to see it too. On four o'clock of that same day, I attended the grand opening of the Gas Bar Insurance Services, and the, there was a financial group too that opened up on the same day up at the, the building across from Costco where the Chamber of Commerce is located. Four thirty of that same day, I attended the opening of the new business park, the district, which is over there in the old school district property, where they built, basically you can own your own industrial spot. It's a very neat concept, and we met a lot of the owners up there. Looks like that place is going to do great business, I can't, can't wait to see that succeed. And like I said earlier in the meeting today, I did attend on Friday, July twenty-third, a meeting with the owners of the Fairfield property and listened to their pitch prior to the meeting today. Mr. Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Littscher.
Thank you. On Thursday, June twenty-fourth, I attended the Interfaith Forum. They have one once a month, and I will tell you that it's very enlightening to see, to hear the different religious discussions of our different groups within our community, and appreciate all the comments that were shared there. On Saturday, June twenty-sixth, I actually am going to mention, I played the harp for Memorial for one of our Simi Valley residents, Chris Kahoon. And I know that with COVID, there has been, I would say, we waited to celebrate life. And so it was, I was honored to be there for his celebration, beloved by many in the community. But it just made me realize that during this pandemic, we have, there's much that's been missed, and so we, anyway, condolences to his family. And I also, with Councilmember Judge, appreciated the ribbon-cutting or grand opening for Evolve Real Estate and, and what they're doing up there in their new facility. I will tell you that for the most of this time, I've been in Hawaii, where my daughter was having a baby, and I, and she needed my assistance with her toddler. But I want you to know that Independence Day is celebrated in Hawaii, just as it's celebrated here in Simi Valley, that our country and its independence is appreciated in every state. And so it was lovely to see it celebrated Hawaiian style. I will say that on Tuesday, July sixth, I did have a, a Zoom meeting with Mr. Andrew Nolan, who is working with the City Attorney Recruitment Process. On Saturday, July thirteenth, I just wanted to commend our neighborhood council representatives who do so much behind the scenes. Actually, I took a map of Neighborhood Council Three to Doug Bamforth, who sits on that council. He was doing some studying in preparation for upcoming meetings, and I appreciated his diligence. On Sunday, July eighteenth, I appreciated the efforts of our police department and that outstanding fiftieth anniversary open house that was held. It truly was a great community celebration of, of what they've done. And I will tell you, that's the first time I've had an official tour of the police department. I don't know why it's taken me so long, I wanted one, I just need to be more, I need to muscle my way in. But it was lovely to, to, to tour, tour their facility and to see the different equipment, how it's being used, and just to see the community celebrating our safety and all the good works of our force, and thank you. Thursday, July twenty-second, I too attended the grand opening of the Gas Bar Insurance Services, and the other group that's with them, and as well as the grand opening of the District Business Park. Those are both wonderful additions to our community. And then on Friday, July twenty-third, with the mayor, I attended the grand opening or ribbon-cutting of the Soaring Spirits International, which is a flagship nonprofit organization that is being housed within the Free Clinic and provides solace to widows and widowers who have lost their, their companion. And it's a, it's a wonderful program, wonderful international organizations with outreach to over a hundred and forty countries, and, and it is headquartered here in Simi Valley, which is outstanding. And I too met with the, the, the group that presented this evening. And so appreciate what's going on behind the scenes here in our community, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luvanos.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, June twenty-sixth, I attended the First Annual Pride Parade and Picnic. It started at the United Methodist Church, and the caravan around town, and ended up at Rancho Simi Community Park. It was pretty amazing, there were so many local vendors and groups there, including Simi Code Red, and Rise, and Eight O Five Resist, I mean, it was just amazing. Beautiful expression of pride for our LGBTQIA community, and specifically talking about the topic of intersectionality. So it was a beautiful thing, there was singing, there was dancing. Simi Code Red, in case you didn't know, provides feminine hygiene products to low-income students free of charge, and so they were able to raise over two hundred dollars, I believe. So it was a pretty amazing program. On the same day, Ventura County had its virtual Pride Month celebration in the evenings. I was able to attend virtually on Zoom and celebrate Pride Month with people from all across Ventura County, so that was pretty exciting. On Thursday, July first, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting, and we approved, we approved a couple of new, a couple of new energy providers. We're working on expanding to get more geothermal, because geothermal will allow for us to provide power at night. So it's twenty-four seven, and you don't have to worry about, you know, solar, but we're looking at solar energy. And one of the programs that I would like for us to be a part of, and they're considering us, I would like us to do it, is the Power Ready Program. So the Power Ready Program is a program that they're offering to sixteen cities, and they are considering Simi Valley, which would allow us to have our own independent energy in ti, in times of a power shutdown. And we all know what a power shutdown is like, because we've experienced that. But what happens when you have the trifecta, when you have a power shutdown and a wildfire and extreme heat? So then where do you put people that are at risk, right, who need access to electricity for the medical devices or air conditioning, if they're vulnerable populations? So this is a solar energy and storage, independent of the power grid, that will provide us energy from four to nine, five hours of energy at any given time. And so they're offering it to different cities, I know they're, they're thinking about Simi Valley, I'm like, me, 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 we want this, we want this. So it would be independent energy, and the best part is, it costs us nothing. It is absolutely free to cities that choose to engage in this, in this program, because all we have to provide is the land, the space for the solar energy, and then they will provide the, the solar panels and the storage, so that if something like that happens, and we know that it's happened here in Simi Valley, we actually had, and I know we had at least once where we had a power shutdown, and we had extreme heat, and we had opened up one of the community centers, the Parks and Rec Center down the street, Santa Susana Rancho, for emergency because of extreme heat, and then we had to close it because there was no electricity, because there was a power shutdown. So this would solve that issue. It would solve the issue of having access to electricity in an emergency like that, where there's extreme heat and wildfire and a power shutdown. So I encourage you to look into the Power Ready Energy Program. It's, it's a phenomenal program, and I think it's going to be pretty amazing and wonderful for us. And like I said, it costs nothing to cities, because we, the, the savings that that would be generated by us not using power from the grid is how they're going to pay for it. So it's free, it's free, the Power Ready Program. They're also talking about, they had a presentation on net energy metering, and just a quarterly communications report from the different chairs. And like I said, we're, we're looking at, you know, ensuring that we have a wide variety and diversity of different clean energy issues and clean energy sources. And as we know, you know, we're having wildfires, gosh, I mean, once, once a week it seems like in the area. So we really have to address the issue of climate change, and Clean Power Alliance is doing everything in its power to address the issue of climate change. So I'm really, really proud to be working with Clean Power Alliance on that issue. On Sunday, July fourth, I, I want to thank the city manager and the city staff and Parks and Rec for the beautiful, amazing Fourth of July fireworks display here in the city. It was wonderful to have it back, it was wonderful that it was free. It was wonderful to, to just have the space and place to, you know, see your neighbors and see your friends and walk around the park. And I just want to thank everyone who participated and made that happen. So thank you, Brian, thank you, staff, thank you, Parks and Rec Department for putting that together and allowing us the space and place to come together on Fourth of July, that was a wonderful event. On Thursday, July eighth, I attended the Ventura Council of Governments meeting, and there's quite a bit, so I apologize in, in advance, but a lot of really important stuff. Redistricting is being held right now, so redistricting for Congress and for Assembly and for districts even within the city is happening right now. So you can go to www.wedrawthelinesbackslashmeetings, and you can sign up to go to a meeting, and you can give your input on where you want the lines to be drawn, what communities you think should be included or not. We got our project, progress report on the REAP project that is going to include inclusionary zoning housing ordinances. It is also going to include an ADU project, where they will give us like prepackaged ADU plans. So it'll streamline people who want to get ADUs. So I'm really, really excited about those projects that are happening. The League of Cities Conference is happening in Sacramento on September twenty-second, twenty-fourth. We also had a report from VCTC, from Amanda Wagon, talking about the fake corridor study. There will be a public workshop in August, you're all invited to go. They're talking about transit integration and efficiency studies. And the Freeway Service Patrol Program is now up on the one eighteen, and the twenty-three, and the one-on-one. So if you break down, okay, you can call the Freeway Service Patrol, it is free, okay? And they've already helped over a hundred thousand people in the past four months, which is amazing. So if you get stuck on the side of the road, you run out of gas, you're, you know, you have a popped tire, whatever happens, okay? There is help, okay? So you can call, I'm not sure what the number is, but I'll find out. But I, I would assume, just call two-one-one, and then they'll get you the right people that'll come. But they're patrolling around, and they're just helping people, and it's helping alleviate traffic issues. So please, please, apprise yourself of that. And then we had a presentation, a really important presentation, from Matthew Fineup. He is the Executive Director of the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting at Cal Lutheran University. And he did a report on the state of the Ventura County economy. And he basically talked about how Ventura County has And he basically talked about how Ventura County has had a weak economy since two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and the U.S. has grown and performed more strongly than our county. And so we, one of the things that is happening is that we're growing more slowly than the rest of the country. And when we asked him specifically what that was about, he brought it down to us, you know, very, very succinctly. It's about workforce housing. We need to build workforce housing. Our economy in Ventura County was weak before the pandemic, and it shrank every year since two thousand fifteen. And that's because of contracting labor force, who were adding jobs but losing workers. And he said the cause of the weakness was workforce housing, that permits have been low. But we could get it back again. He said, if we continue to have the courage, right, to build a workforce housing and address the issue of housing affordability, then we can bring our economy back. One of the negative factors is accelerating the exodus of working age adults and the remote working revolution and renewed
I should probably address that in a future agenda.
Oh, okay. Yes. So I can I can do that at a separate report. I would like to invite him to come and present at the city council meeting, if that would be all right. Yes? Because he did a much better presentation than I did. So but I just wanted to bring that to light. And last but not least, the Ventura County Community Foundation is going to be having their meeting on November fourth. And there will be an annual VCOG dinner this this year on Thursday, September ninth, in Santa Paula, and you're all invited. Let's see. Sorry, sorry. On Wednesday, July fourteenth, I attended the Simi Valley Interfaith Council meeting, and they they're doing their monthly faith, I believe. You can learn about different faiths, and I believe that this next one is about Mormons. So you can come learn about, if you want to know about the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, I want to make sure I say that right. You can learn about them this month, the month of August. On Thursday, July fifteenth, the mayor and I attended the grand opening of Planet Fitness. I went live. I was so excited. I was so excited, because ten bucks a month you can get, you know, you can get a gym membership at Planet Fitness. It's right next to Hobby Lobby, if you know where Mervyn's was, if you're as old as I am and you know where Mervyn's was. That's where it is, and you can go join Planet Fitness. And we got to try their, they have really cool massage chairs that you can check out and a spa and a tanning salon and all kinds of cool stuff. And they have training, too, so you get that for ten bucks. It's pretty cool. So and unfortunately, I did attend a funeral the following weekend. My uncle passed away from COVID-related issues. He was on the front line as a doctor and was unable to get the vaccine before it was available. So I want to thank, I know Rocky Rhodes was one of the speakers here for acknowledging those of us who have been hard hit by COVID, because it has been a difficult journey for those of us who have had to bury loved ones. So just wanted to acknowledge them. And that's my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. On Thursday, June twenty fourth, I was able to attend a an event up at the Reagan Library, and that's the real message. The Reagan Library is open. I was able to listen to a speech by former Vice President Mike Spence. Did I say that wrong? Pence. I said Spence. I caught myself. Okay, Wednesday, June thirtieth, I went to the appreciation luncheon for the Park District for Mark Johnson, who, after twenty-eight years of service as a board member, resigned, stepped down, whatever, got voted out, but end result is, it was a nice luncheon to to say goodbye and thank you to Mark. July fourth, I heard what a great show the fireworks show was, and I congratulate everybody. I was out of town, was unable to attend. July twelfth, I was on a podcast interview with Squawk Box. I guess that's a local podcast, and that was interesting. On the thirteenth, I attended the Chambers Economic Development Executive Action Committee from eight thirty to ten in the morning. On Wednesday, July fourteenth, I met with Pat Montoya and the pastor of, oh, I can't remember, the New Horizons, I think it is, church, anyway. And we had a great discussion regarding the need and what's coming and what's available. And we're going to have another meeting on in the way of mental health, mental health help in particular for those that are suffering from the abuses and misuse of fentanyl. I went to the grand opening of Planet Fitness. Nice, nice facility. Look forward to seeing that thrive. And I also, on the same day, talked to the folks, the consulting firm that's doing the city attorney recruitment. And then in the afternoon, had the ADA Paratransit Advisory Committee meeting. There was nothing to report back to you on that at this time. I was also, I was attended multiple briefings, I think all the briefings with the police department, just to make contact and say thank you for the work they're doing and letting them know that we realize the mistreatment they're getting nationwide, and even some here, unfortunately, locally. So hopefully, that message got to them. I spoke on behalf of the council, really, just saying that we're aware of what goes on, and we do appreciate what they do. Let's see here. I think that was it. Oh, no, I met with the corporate folks from festival companies. They're the owner of the mall. And I think there's exciting things on their way. I look forward to being able to hear more from them and to be able to report out. Right now, it's it's kind of in the beginning stages, so I don't want to report something that doesn't happen or gets changed. But at least those folks are very interested in the town center and making it successful. And driving by there, you'll notice that they're taking much better care of the facility. And you look at the landscaping around the Macy's East, and it's it's coming back. And they're doing a good job of trying to beautify that area. So I appreciate that and look forward to hearing what they have to say about what they're going to do. I, too, attended the Soaring Spirits International grand opening at the Free Clinic. And then we had a grand opening of Gas Bar Insurance Services over the right above the Chamber of Commerce. And then just a few minutes later was the grand opening of the District Business Park, which is a very nice facility. And I think it's, wasn't it more than half sold out already? Yeah, so it's a successful new concept, so that's very good for the city. So that's my report. Okay, so at this time, we'll go to nine B, which is call for any future agenda items.
Mayor, I'd like to request two items.
Okay.
The first one I mentioned previously, I'd love to have a presentation from Matthew Fineup, the Executive Director of the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting at CLU, to give his report here, and he said he would be more than welcome, more than happy to, on the state of the Ventura County economy.
Okay, so I don't think that'd be an agenda item necessarily. That's just a guest speaker.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need approval for that.
Okay, and your other one?
And the second request is, and I'll just give very short context. I got an email from a resident on July twenty fourth, named Gary Scott, about a neighbor who has three boats, an RV, and a fifth on his front yard. And while I know we have a moratorium on enforcement of the RV ordinance, I'd like an ordinance limiting the allowance of one to to limit it to one recreational vehicle per per residence, because Mr. Scott, at this point, has no legal remedy because of our moratorium on enforcement of the RV ordinance, but five recreational vehicles on one property seems excessive. So I'm requesting a discussion on having an ordinance limiting the allowance of only one recreational vehicle per dwelling.
So we're working on rescheduling the RV ordinance to come back to the city council in early fall, and that would be part of that discussion. So it would be part of it.
So does that mean that this resident has no?
Right now, we're having code enforcement take a look at that. We've received the email. We're having code enforcement take a look at it as well. But I mean, there is, I mean, there is no prohibition on how many vehicles and what type of vehicles you can park legally on your property.
That's why that's why I brought it up, because I didn't know if it was a separate issue or?
Yeah, it is separate but related, and it would, I believe it could be addressed in the discussion on the RV parking.
Okay, so can it be included as part of the staff report, then?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a question real quick. I know we get these from time to time, at least we used to. Economic development updates. I know we've had a lot of stuff go on in the city since since the pandemic. We've had people leave. We've had new places open. We talked about Planet Fitness and other things. Are we scheduled to have another one of these?
Yeah, now that we're, our heads are getting clearer and we're having opportunity to get back to somewhat normal, we'll be starting to provide those. Our assistant city manager will be able to provide those on a more regular basis.
Great.
Yep.
I'm sorry, mayor, I have one more request, if I may. I know that we are receiving fifteen million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds. I would like to propose that we give a survey to our residents to ask them where they think that money should be spent. I don't know if that's an agenda item, or I'm not sure where to put that.
Do you have a comment?
We're putting together a report to the city council on the use of the on a matrix on some of the things that you can use the ARP money for, and I think it would be appropriate to have that discussion as part of it. And we, I should be bringing that to you next month, so.
Is it possible to have the report and then give and then ask for a community input?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, because we're just giving you some ideas. You can hate them, love them, send us off to do surveys, whatever you want to do.
I don't want just us, you know, I want input from the community.
Yes, sure. And the council wants to do that. That's fine.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, it's time for that time we don't really necessarily like, and we're going to adjourn in memory of a few folks. First of all, we're going to adjourn in memory of Imperial County Deputy Sheriff Anthony Redondo. And we will adjourn in memory of Merrily, excuse me, Mary Olafson, and that is Tammy Heck's mother. Tammy is one of our employees. And one of our local business owners, the owner of Greta's Guns, Chris Biller, will be journeying in memory of Chris also. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.